But you could feel the wall just shaking.
Took the street, somebody took the street thing off.
And then, and then Jeff Perry told me that, you know, his, his sign out front, the, the, the plastic part blew up.
Mm-hmm.
He said, he said if anybody would have been out there, he said they could have got killed because they were, they were like glass.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
The, the plastic exploded out of the sign and just it was boom all over.
Exactly. But how could people even be out in that wind?
Parking and street thing.
You know?
I think I know why. I think I know why you have it. Because remember you're going to change the word to department to ordinances?
He said there was some.
And I think you probably took the whole thing.
Jeff told me they were older women.
Absolutely.
I thought he said they were from Manuka.
Because I said it's really not the street department, it's the ordinances.
And they must have been going down two fifty-one when this thing hit and they pulled into his, his business, were knocking on the door and he opened up the door.
That's my notes. Hey, they're calling, I'm writing stuff down everywhere I go.
He said he just shut the door behind him and that's about when the sign blew.
B.C. I'm ca- I'm calling them on Monday.
I worked for him as summer help for three years. So he knows exactly who I am. That's why it's hilarious.
Was it good or bad? Did it end up good? Oh, it's on good terms. Because he said I can call him back Monday, but we might not get the resource until Tuesday or Wednesday. So if I mention you and it's, it was good, maybe we'll get it sooner. If it was bad, I'm going to leave you out of it.
Calvin's dad's probably going to be the one that comes too.
Hey.
He works for the county.
I don't know how much we're getting, that's the thing.
Call the open the city government special working meeting to order.
August right.
Here. Here.
Yes, here.
Tomorrow.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I get into number four, I'd like to, there's two short, uh, statements I need to, to read. Any resident who opts to call in to comment on an agenda item or public comment item, there is a time delay. We will attempt to give the person time to call. Should they miss the allotted time, we will go back and afford them the time to comment. And based on Governor Prisker's request, the city of Oglesby will not proceed with shut offs for delinquent utility bill, bills through August. The city will continue to work with residents to get assistance and help to address their situation. Public comments on agenda items only.
Do I have to be quiet at thirty until I?
Yes.
Option to.
Yes.
Unless you want a public comment on agenda items, Greg.
I want to get, I'm happy on your planning session.
Hearing done, now we'll move on to, uh, number five, hold discussion regarding the hazardous mitigation plan.
This is something of this community risk assessment is something that we need to have on file and approved. Um, it was created, uh, in, with the other area, uh, departments. Shug was the one that sent the completed one to us. We made a couple of recommendations regarding, uh, the events. But basically it's looking at what are, what are our risks for Oglesby as far as tornadoes, floods, uh, dangerous winds, I think after Monday. I don't know if medium is going to be enough. It might be a high, high, high.
We have to add the term derecho in there.
Derecho, I know. That, that was something.
Is that how it's pronounced? I, I can't even pronounce, is that?
Yeah. When I first read it, I'm like, what is this? Is this a tropical storm? I don't, never heard of that term.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Tom Skilling uses it though, so I, before, so I've, I've heard it. So anyway, um, it kind of goes through, uh, what we would do for mitigation should something like this occur. So have there been questions about the activities?
I, I think they're very basic, unfortunately.
They are.
Um, I will tell you this, after what's going on here, uh, we've never had what's going on right now ever happen before. So w- we are, we are already planning that once everybody's restored and stuff like that, we're going to sit down and we're going to try to develop a plan that if anything like this were to ever happen again in the future, that we have a better way of, of trying to handle it instead of scrambling for resources. So that would probably be item, I guess, number eight. Uh, I'm not saying the other ones are bad that are on here, they're just, they're very basic, like.
Right, they're not prescriptive.
Yeah, yeah, talk.
How to do something.
Yeah, talk to people about the value of flood insurance, you know, stuff like that. They're, it's very basic. Only one thing I'd, I'd make a mention of, it talks about our siren. Apparently our siren has the capability of having vocal stuff over it, but it's never been tested. I think that'd be interesting if we tried to.
I think we should use the Code Red Network if that is that important though, too.
We should, and that's in there. That does, it does talk.
I don't know if voice across Oglesby is going to work, especially in that storm, but maybe.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious what, what it even sounds like.
I'm just, I'm just thankful nobody got hurt.
Yes.
Very fortunate.
And the, the guys are just, uh, doing a heck of a job working to, to get everything restored.
So I don't know if there's a timeframe that, I guess we have to have this on a policy, adopted or something like that?
We do, we have to adopt it.
Is there a timeframe that we're supposed to adopt it or, or I mean, is, I don't know what the rules are on that.
I don't recall. Do, I think it should have been done already, by my understanding. I think we're late.
So we'll put it on next meeting and approve it in two meetings.
And then we know that it's a working document that as things occur, we can add to it.
How about we do that with?
That probably doesn't have to be placed on file. You can probably just adopt it.
Okay, next meeting.
So the idea.
Because you're not expending any money. It's just, it's just a plan. And I don't think there's any reason, you know, once you work your way through what just happened and you want to add to it, I don't think there's any reason you can't modify it.
So how about that's the kind of the plan? Maybe next meeting we'll adopt as a policy with the idea that we'll review every year.
I would defer to the North Central. I, I think that sometimes when they're doing grant applications, this is one of the things they require.
Correct.
Have you run across that? Yeah, I, you know, I, I, so we really should have one so that, you know, they don't s- submit a grant application and it gets bounced out because we didn't, you know, check one of the, one of the boxes.
This is basically a working agreement, uh, that we continue to, to address.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
So we'll put it on the next agenda to adopt it.
Okay. Next on the agenda is number six, uh, hold a discussion in regards to utility spending and spending in all departments.
Should I take the floor?
Yeah, it's kind of a rough time to be talking about this now.
Okay, so, yeah, as of last week, we didn't think this would be a topic, but right now, clarify, I'm not talking about the emergency response. I'm not turning, talking about turning people's power on. We needed that. It had to happen. I totally understand that. We'll find where we're going to spend or afford that. And we'll worry about that after everyone's back up and running. Don't get me wrong. But on top of the COVID, you know, on top of that, we have this situation now that we've had a ton of spending and right now our tax dollars aren't coming in as much as they used to because no one has to pay their taxes until September fourth without getting a late fee. So majority of people have not even paid them yet. And on top of that, we need to figure out what we can spend and what we can't spend on. And yes, you say everything's needed, but we have to, we have to move that farther to, this really is needed compared to, oh, we do need this, but we can't afford it right now. And realistically, I don't know when we're going to get through this tur- turmoil with COVID nineteen and all that kind of stuff, but that, I'm worried about our revenues coming in right now, paying for all this stuff because our TIF where it's at, we can't even afford that new water tower paint job. So that's going to come straight out of the general fund. And realistically, we want to kind of hold on to that right now because if everything shuts down again, we're going to slot revenue, sales tax, all that revenue that we count on, it will also not be coming in. And it kind of worries me going forward. Another issue I had was the wastewater treatment plant. We paid to automate it. We shouldn't be putting anything into that if we're going to replace it unless we literally need it to run the plant. And if there's anything else we're planning on replacing anytime soon, we got to quit dropping dollars into it to then replace it.
I, I absolutely agree. I hate the idea that, that we are putting money into something that is essentially a Band-Aid. Because it is, it, that's what it is. It's beyond its economic life. So the more money we put into it, we're not going to get that value out. The unfortunate thing is, um, we have to be able to maintain some of those requirements because of EPA standards. We have to do that. We have to be able to maintain that even through the period about, if, even if today we had a signed contract to build the next wastewater treatment plant, that's going to take a significant period of time. And we still have to operate and maintain the current one. So that's why there's a cost that's associated. We had to put money, what, sixty thousand to the digester, now the twenty thousand to the trickling water filter because it made us be over on ammonia numbers.
I'm talking about the automation part of the plant. I believe you've.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about, are you talking about water treatment or wastewater treatment?
Maybe it was water treatment, either or. We, we, I, I don't think we should be upgrading the automation, especially for a third-party contractor if right now we don't really have the money to do that. And I, I, I'm just telling you the truth. I'm worried that in September, if people don't pay their taxes, what are we going to do? And that's where I'm at with.
Well, I want to make sure I understand what you're talking, I don't know what you mean by when you say the automation part. You're talking about?
There was two or three bills that came through about twenty-five thousand. I'm not sure if it was the wastewater or the water treatment plant, but it was pretty much what I read is it's automating the facilities and right now.
The only thing I can think, you're thinking about is the trickling water filter. And that was because it was a requirement. I think it was ammonias that it made us over on because it didn't operate anymore. It's the one that had the swinging arms that moves around.
I, yeah, no. From what I read from the bills, it looked more like they were automating the facility than replacing the arms.
I will look back on that and I'll get you a report on that.
Okay.
What that is. So it's, so we, we know we're talking about the same thing. Because I, I, I don't think there's anything that I've spent money on, um, that we didn't absolutely need. I really don't.
And so i- if we have an open, are we replacing valves still? Are we, what are we doing right now that we can cut back on? Because realistically, I don't think this trajectory is looking good. We just doubled water rates. We don't want to do anything more than that. And I think we should try to hold what we have coming in right now until.
So one of the things that we can cut back on is we can reduce the amount of overstock that we have for valves. So I was trying at one point to make sure that if we could get a better price by having stock valves in when something goes bad. And apparently there's no extra value in, in buying them in a bulk or anything like that.
Okay.
So we've been kind of buying them as we need when something breaks. The concern is if one of them breaks, that's an abnormal size. For example, the, the pipe that we have going out to the west side, that is a unique size. So the valves for stuff like that can be a little more difficult to get, doesn't it? So that's the risk I have. But the, but the advantage is we haven't been spending as much to keep our stocks up for that. So that's one cost savings that kind of do until then.
And I, I just think we need to try to look for a little bit more right now. And again, the pandemic and this disaster on top of each other, I'm, I'm a little worried for the, the second half of the year going forward about where we'll be at.
So what has me concerned about, so like some of the stuff you're talking about, so when I talk about stock, um, we, we, the good news is for everything that's going on right now, we were able to, we just recently stocked our, our poles, uh, transformers, things like that. The good news is we have all the supplies. We just needed the help. We got all our supplies on hand. So the bad news is we are turning and burning through a lot of those supplies and stuff like that. So after the, we are through this stuff, good news is we have enough for everything right now. But guess what? There's a certain amount of stock that we're going to have to get back to. And, and that, I'm concerned if I don't refill that, I don't want to have it to the, the point to where I have another couple of poles go down and I can't replace the poles. Or a transfer blows and transformer blows and I can't replace that transformer. So I do have to have a minimum number of stock items.
And I think our coverage should cover a lot of.
I, I certainly hope that's the case.
Damage, I think.
I hope that's the case because everything that's going on, we're not too worried about the cost right now. It's all about getting the people, uh, what they need. Uh, but there's going to be a cost associated with this stuff that you're going to see in the bills here coming soon, probably.
And all the usual, they're keeping track of what they've replaced because of the storm and all that kind of stuff, too.
I, that is.
Let's take an image.
I will say, I will say a loose yes.
Okay.
We know how many poles we had. I'm not saying we're checking off every pole that go, that, this one goes up, but we know how many poles we had and we know how many we loaded up and sent off and transformers, so yes.
So we will, that's going to be key to getting that money.
Getting refund for it, yes.
If you want an insurance claim, it's document, document, document.
Oh, yeah.
We can, uh, how can I say this? We got, we got, uh, good people that can keep track of, uh, of, of what they used. I think, uh, Tommy, you realize that, that a lot of our big expense, uh, on the, on the electric side is that, uh, the Malik substation, if I understand that correctly, is about at max capacity out there?
It.
And we have to.
So, so what Tommy made a comment on a couple of meetings ago, he is correct. The, the, we have enough upgrade there for the next phase, even for, for G I S, what they're going to go to. That is true. The problem is on their next phase of where they go to, that's about maximizing that substation. Which the problem with that is that limits our possible expansion for other things in the future. So if, if we don't upgrade past that, we won't be able to, uh, take on even larger sizes or even more businesses out there. And that's what I kind of want to avoid.
So if we, the Phoenix sub, could that fund anything, power that out there? Because we have that extra capacity there until we get a new one then?
So, so the problem with that is, so even though it has the capacity, then there's a lim, so we had this conversation with Verbal not too long ago. The next problem for that is the capacity to transfer over. We're limited of how much power can actually be transferred over via the line. She says, when, when we upgrade next, we're going to actually have to do a combination of two things. Whether it is upgrade the Phoenix sub and find a way to get that power across, or upgrade the Phoenix, or the, the Malik Road substation and still have that cross-connect if we want to be able to backfeed the entire town.
Okay.
So, and, and a lot of this also, there's so many different ways and options. It depends if we end up getting that second feed from Ameren or I guess there's even a comment option now that we discussed. Whatever it is, I would love to get that second feed into town to increase our reliability for what we have going on. But again, all those things will have a cost. And I know what you're saying, do we have the money to spend for these things? We're going to have to find a way to, to get that eventually if we want to continue to expand on the west side.
And so I think we should take the GTI money and we start actually getting paid on these big bills that are coming, putting that aside for the sub. And when we have enough after that, we should put a sub in.
So.
So I'm worried about, again, cracking the egg before the chicken or whatever that term is, you know, getting ahead of ourselves, let's say.
Well, you, so you're right about, so I printed off all the general fund bills and I looked at stuff here. And one of the things I kind of wanted to talk about a little bit is we, we, I only have the two years worth here. I got fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. But it seems like we kind of rotate how much that we are taking out of those funds to put into the general fund. I know maybe it's because we have to make balances happen or something like that, but I, I'd like to get a more standardized and structured amount that we take. Like we took three quarters of a million, I think it was twenty nineteen. Let me see, I get my facts right here. Twenty nineteen, we took out seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the electric fund to put into the general fund. But then in twenty twenty.
That's, that's appro- appropriations.
Well.
Well, they kind of changed, that's the thing.
We have, we have in our rate, we've built in our rate ordinance some percentage that, that we would just automatically transfer. If we've had surpluses, I, I think if, if the general fund was short, you know, we transferred money into, into the general fund.
And then twenty twenty fiscal year ending, we transferred four hundred thousand. And, but then the water funds are very different. One year is zero and then it's four hundred and eighty thousand. So I, I don't know, again, I'm not an accounting guy and all that stuff. But I, I think what you're saying is we want to take this money and we want to make sure that fund is building up to pay for these kinds of things. I think we got to find a way to try to standardize what we take out and put back into the general fund because we can, again, I don't have the, the many years past this right now, but it looks like we kind of have a lopsided amount that's, that's being transferred out.
And so when Joel Hopkins does give his presentation, we'll, we'll ask him these kind of questions too in there. Because from what I remember the last year was, we were, our goal was to get the general fund back to break even on paper, is what the goal was. And so we were there last year and that's why we did what we did last year. Um, but again, you got to remember this appropriation, not a budget, that kind of stuff.
That is true. Well, because I remember when we talked about our long-term maintenance plan, we, for, like for the water stuff, we were estimating two hundred and forty thousand dollars every year to be taken back into the general fund. So when I look at it, i- it's funny because one year is zero and the other year was four hundred and eighty thousand. I'm like, was that supposed to average them out between the two? I, I don't know.
I, well, I can tell you, we're, we're going to be using the general fund for everything right now because TIFs pretty much go on, at the end of the day, if we, if we need money for general, it either comes from utilities or we raise taxes, which I really don't think should be an option either, so.
Correct.
I think we should just try to hold our own right now and kind of get through the next couple of years or next year even before we start looking at doing major, major projects.
Well, I'm concerned if we wait a year to upgrade that Malik Road substation because they're already talking, GTI is already talking about a phase four option. Now granted, we don't have any timelines for any of that yet, but for that to occur, we will have to have new infrastructure in there for them to go beyond that capability.
The, the phase, phase two, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, uh, will be completed by March of twenty-one. Then we go to phase three and now there's a phase four. So, and if we're, if we're pushing the point, uh, that we're at capacity now, that limits our ability to, to move the electric from one point to another.
Correct. I'm.
Is the substation TIF six now? I believe so.
I think it is.
And so is this all phased till four now in the current plot or are they going to develop?
I, I don't have, for this latest, latest phase they gave me information on, there's no timeframes on it. There is a few couple of figures of size, but I don't think there's a lot of figures of, uh, what the electrical needs are.
Because.
But my big concern is even, even by finishing that, I don't want to just figure just, just GTI. I am hoping that we are going to have much more expansion opportunities on that side. And I want to, because when people ask you for that, what do they call it? R F D, request for development? You have to put what else you're capable of, of supplying. And my concern is I don't want to ever have to tell a business that we're at our capacity.
Oh, definitely. That's not what.
I don't want to ever do that. So my concern is if we don't do an upgrade of something more and GTI does their next expansion, I would have to tell people that we're kind of at close to our capacity. And that would turn people.
The reason I'm asking if this is going to be on the same plot or not is because if they build it in a different plot that's in TIF six and that will help fund, so I'm not, realistically, if we need to do that, unless we get a miracle somewhere, I don't know how we're going to find that, my kind of cash laying around, but most likely we'd have to bond out in TIF six to pay for that substation upgrades and the new area of TIF six. So that's why I'm asking if they're going to develop on that whole pop property of their plan.
I don't think I, I, I seen some numbers for square footage, but I don't think I've seen a plat design or anything like that yet. So I, I don't know. I can find that out though.
Yeah, that's something we want to, because either way, we need to start planning for Malik.
Absolutely.
We could.
Jim? Jim? Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, so it's all in TIF.
Is that the one that had the square footage for it too? Okay.
Isn't, isn't that the, uh, the issue, uh, they need to call for a variance because of the.
The parking.
Parking spaces?
We got that set, by the way, that, that variance hearing, uh, so they could keep moving is set, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Wednesday, September second, uh, for that. Because it turns out they would have needed a hundred and seventy-five parking spaces and what did they have, Jim? A hundred and fifty-seven? Is, is that correct? So they need about a twenty parking space variance.
I think what Tommy's asking though, does, does that plat design, does that reach outside of where the TIF six lines were? Or is it still in, if you know, if you don't?
Yeah, so it's all TIF.
Okay, should be good then.
Saying it's, the, uh, the thing that I, that I've seen and I noticed and I can't find my, uh, my note, their load has, has increased, uh, and it's, and it's going to be, it's going to continue to increase. It isn't going to fluctuate up and down, which is, which is a good thing for us.
Guess COVID's not affecting weed sales.
Pardon?
I guess COVID's not affecting weed sales.
They're up dramatically from what I understand.
Really?
Yeah.
Sitting at home all day, what else are you going to do?
I guess that makes sense.
All right, that's pretty much all I have.
Spending in all departments. Any, any other comments or just, uh?
Just a suggestion for you folks, you know, usually when Joel does the audit, he always comes and gives, you know, a five-minute presentation or, or so it, or a ten-minute presentation at a council meeting. Besides doing that, maybe the next, when, when he's ready to do that and make the presentation, maybe then you should ask him whether we can set another working meeting where he can maybe get more down, he, he can maybe get more down in the weeds, you know.
Okay.
You're not going to, you're not going to want to turn the council meeting into a, a, you know, a two and a half hour discussion of, of finances. But m- maybe ask him to come back to a, to a working meeting and just say, this is what we're going to talk about.
Well, let me ask this. I know I asked this, let's get real loud. I, I know I asked this last year because we'd, I, I was hoping to see if we can get a budget. Is, is it because appropriations are easier to manage? What, what's the reason that we don't want to try to make a working budget of some sort? Is there, is that because it's too difficult, municipality or?
No.
State law.
There, there are different rules. You, you can either pass an appropriations ordinance or a budget ordinance. Uh, a budget ordinance has to be passed prior to the start of the fiscal year, which for us is, is May first. And, uh, you know, really, uh, a budget ordinance is, is, is probably to, to do it properly would entail more realistic, uh, analysis of what income you have and what your expenditures are going to be. Now Oglesby prepared kind of a, a, a non-binding budget. Uh, I want to say that was two years ago. Correct me?
Two years ago.
And the, when they were ready to adopt it, uh, I, I said, you know, we don't want to call this a budget ordinance because a budget ordinance has certain timelines and specific criteria in the Illinois municipal code. So I said, you know, just call it a, a, a working budget. I mean, you can simply use it as a, as a management tool. But the difference between the appropriations and the budget, you, you can either adopt an appropriations ordinance or you can adopt a budget ordinance. The budget ordinance is usually going to be in a lot more detail, uh, and probably would require, you, you know, the heads of all the departments, you know, really kind of understanding the budget process. Maybe they do, you know, maybe they don't. I mean, that, you know, you're talking about people who are, you know, maybe their, their primary goal is to make sure that the power's on and running and, or, or that, you know, the streets are, the snow's, the snow's plowed and the, and, and the streets are fixed and, you know, the water leaks and sewer leaks are fixed. I, I, and, and you almost, you may need another s- skillset there, you know, to, to be able to, you know, to plan, to kind of plan that, that out, especially, you know, uh, in, in, in the form of a budget ordinance. But you can do it.
Well, let me ask you.
We, we don't, we can't get started, you know, you'd probably want to get started right after the first of the year.
So let me ask you this. A, a couple of years ago, when, when they did do the working budget, did that help? Was it better for the city in that regard? I guess that's kind of an opinionated question because what Tommy's talking about is trying to control our expenditures. I'm wondering if that makes it easier for us to do that.
And if you think.
It should, in theory, I would think.
If you think getting a budget for, for us is, will help you with the utilities, we can do that? And I know that they break them down by each department bill-wise so that you can track.
Yeah.
What you're spending, it's.
So the reason I kind of had these questions is I, you know, when I saw this on the agenda, I came into the city, I'm like, can I get a, can I get a print off of all? I want to make sure that I'm not going over any appropriations. That was, that was my thing. I didn't want to be caught pants down, basically.
Yeah.
Probably wasn't the best word to use, but, uh, I want to make sure that, that I'm not spending. And when I look at it, the problem is the, the appropriations is such a large range, I'm well under that. So, you know, I, I want to be able to make sure that I'm saying I'm, I'm spending responsibly, but I have a very, very wide range because of the appropriations ordinance. So, you know what I mean? I, I want to, I want to.
No, I understand completely. That's why.
So that's what I'm saying. I want to be.
You can spend way more than we make and it's still be allowed.
I get you. Uh, I mean, I want to be able to make sure we're, we're spending responsibly at the same time. Um, so that's why I'm thinking, you know, how likely is it for that next year that we start working on a working budget?
I mean, I, I think, I think you could do it. Uh, I know this stuff is old because I, I don't know if the state is, is, is doing this as much anymore. But the old Department of Commerce and, and Community Affairs, now the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, used to produce, you know, uh, sample documents like a budget ordinance, an appropriations ordinance, a tax levy ordinance. They were fairly bare. used to produce, you know, uh, sample documents like a budget ordinance, an appropriations ordinance, a tax levy ordinance. They were fairly bare-boned. The, the budget ordinance tried to also key into an accounting system, so I, I think if you're gonna do that, it would probably require some work with Tom,
Yeah.
with Joel, with Amy, and very likely with you, because you're gonna have the departments that are gonna be, I mean, you'd need everybody. You'd need the parks, you'd need, you'd need the, the police, but you know, to, to get started, w- would be with you, and it probably would need some assistance, you know, from, from Joel in that regard. And, uh, the other places that I, I think are, are the other local communities that are using, uh, budget ordinances and actually have, you know, budget officers, would be, you know, Peru and LaSalle, and you may wanna, I think John Duncan is in LaSalle, and in Peru, it's, uh.
Justin Miller.
Just, Justin Miller. You know, you may wanna give him a call, go, you know, they may be willing to go to lunch with you, you know, give you some, both of you guys, give you some ideas that, you know, this is how we start it, that, that, you know.
Yeah.
Instead of trying to reinvent the wheel.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you gotta have the software, yeah, you need to want to have software.
LaSalle is, okay. But I think, so why don't we try to get one for the last six months of this year? And so in the first two months, in January, we can see how well it worked, and if we need to critique it before we start doing a year-long one, if you understand what I mean.
I think that's, I think that's great.
Have, have one started in November.
Yeah, cause I mean, I'm going.
Or even September, maybe.
I'm going month to month, I'm looking at my bills going, okay, do we need this to be, you know, so I'm asking questions about all our bills, but so far, everything we kinda need. So I don't think I'm going over on anything that, that we don't, but I don't have a problem with making sure that, that we're staying within any kind of limits. Cause if you're saying we're concerned about our finances right now, I wanna make sure we're doing that.
The, the other thing you may wanna consider is, a lot of places do both an operating budget and a capital budget. You know, the operating budget, the day-to-day stuff, the capital budget is, we need a new substation, or, you know, or.
Yeah.
We need a new water treatment, that are more, that are gonna, those are gonna be spread across. The expenses to build it and, and how you're gonna pay it are gonna be spread across more than one year, whereas the operating budget may be, you know, you've got five guys working in the, in the street department, Kerry's got eight guys in the, uh, uh, you know, police department, uh. You know, those are more, they're, they're gonna, that, that's gonna kind of be the same, you know, from your, you need squad cars and stuff like that. Uh, but the, the capital budgets, you know, a new sewage treatment plant, that's a ginormous, uh, you know, cost. Uh, and some of those other things, you know, are, are significant costs. So you may wanna have t- t- two types.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on. Whole discussion regarding three-hour parking on East Walnut Street and other matters related to the street department. Three-hour, the three-hour parking, uh, on East Walnut, um, that's due to, uh, uh, the new owners of Claudettes, and, uh, doesn't have a whole lot of parking except for on the street. And, uh, apparently, the people that rent apartments in that area are taking up the parking places.
And that building next door that the apartments are in, also, there's two storefronts there, and he's looking to lease that out, so there's gonna be more business activity in that area, and so that's kind of something we wanna be mindful of, and we wanna make sure, you know, the businesses downtown need that parking for what they need to do to do business.
And the apartments do not afford parking places?
There's parking in the back, and from what I understand, it's tight, so they don't like to park back there, is what I understand. Um.
This doesn't help you much for existing.
And realistically.
Your, your new land development code has, uh, off-street parking requirements for, for rental. I think it's one and a half, I'm not positive, I think, I think I, I think it's one and a half spaces per, per unit, or maybe it's per bedroom, I, I, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but unfortunately, that doesn't, you know, that helps you if somebody wants to come in new, and, you know, doing it, doesn't help you for your existing.
So I didn't really, so the next part of this thing that we, I had a meeting on about, and I didn't really, we didn't really talk about the three.
Before we move, before we move on to the next part.
Well, it kinda relates, I was gonna read the, I actually have the ordinance here to talk about that. So that's why I think, I, we already have something in place that limits parking for Walnut Street for the timeframe. I, I can read it for you if you'd like. Are we talking, well, are we talking about establishing one?
Well, it, it was my understanding that what he needed down there was, uh, we didn't have one.
So we might just need signs, is what I'm hearing from Jason.
Correct, cause, cause so, cause some of the other stuff we're gonna talk about is about stuff that's already in the ordinances, some of it, and we have signs for, so it already says it here. This is, uh, ten dot twenty-four dot zero-three, limited parking zones, B one. It is unlawful to park any vehicle or to permit a vehicle to remain parked on the north and south sides of Walnut Street from the intersection of School Avenue to the intersection of Spring Avenue for a period longer than two consecutive hours, except on Sundays and holidays, from the hours of six to nine P M. The term holiday, and it goes on and on and on. So there is already something there that limits that parking.
So we might just need signs.
So if we don't, I didn't look, I didn't check that, so I can check to see if signs don't exist, and if they do, I could just enforce that, unless you wanna, unless we're talking about modifying it to three-hour parking.
Two hours is good for me.
Yeah.
That's what it already is.
I'm happy.
Okay, and now we can go on to other matters related to the street department.
So, a lot of things came up, uh, I, I was able to have a meeting, uh, with Kerry, the, the, uh, police, and the, uh, street department, and myself, and we sat down, we talked about a lot of different topics. Um, so I have a summary of that stuff in front of you guys right now that we, that we talked about. Um, we talked about some poorly-written ordinances, for example, uh, Porter and Alice is listed, it's incorrect. Uh, it's listed wrong in the ordinance, um, and I think there should be a suggestion to changing it to a four-way stop. Basically, it says that it's a two-way stop, and then the next sentence right after says it's an all-stop intersection, so it's actually incorrect. So I would recommend just changing that to a four-way stop anyways. So, um, next thing on here, there's a whole bunch of stuff, uh, stop signs, let's see here. Um, I've had residents come talk to me about the intersection of First and Dale, where there's a yield sign into the intersection. The residents discussed with me about the safety, the concerns, people just blow right through, so I was thinking about recommending that we change that to a stop sign. Uh, on the other hand, uh, Dale and Second Street is a four-way stop. I was gonna recommend changing that to a two-way stop sign to allow for continuous traffic all the way down Dale to the Dickinson House. So that's all I have for signs. Uh, the next big section though is parking, uh, and I could talk about that for probably a bit.
Can, can I suggest one thing?
Sure.
When you're gonna want to put in traffic control, you know, parking signs? Uh, the, the municipal code allows you to do it, but you have to do it in accordance with the recommendations, I think of I-DOT. I guess what I'm saying is, I've always, when they've been put in, we've always had the police department do a traffic study, so that somebody looks there, that you've got some documentation, cause I think in the, and Jim, jump in, I think in the I-DOT manual, traffic manual, it, there, there's supposed to be a traffic study supporting, uh, you know, supporting speed decisions and, and, and particularly stop signs. And, and just in case anybody ever challenged it, y- you know, I think you ought to make sure that we can say that, you know, the police did a study, and they, they looked at it, and after observing it, you know, recommended that, you know, that there be a stop sign.
So when you do say study, I do have some notes at the bottom here that I'll get into. The study, they, they did bring, they pulled some data for the last eighteen months, uh, and I will talk about that. There's some things that, that kind of points to not doing anything, and there's some things that point to doing something. So I don't know if that counts as a traffic study, but there is some data that I can get into. I can actually jump to that now. Um, so for example, there is no record of accidents in the past eighteen months in Oglesby at any of the uncontrolled three-way T intersections. So the discussion is, is it worthwhile to even change it? Cause there is quite a few of them that, that have no, they're uncontrolled. Which I would think, I was gonna recommend putting stop signs at them and putting them in the thing, but the truth of the matter is, if there's never been an accident in eighteen months, maybe we're, do, do we even need to? That's kinda what I wanted input, what you guys thought. That's why I've been waiting for a working meeting.
I, I, I think we should, if there's been no accidents, I think we shouldn't stop sign the whole town, is how I'm looking at it. And then I'm thinking about the two fifty-one, right before you get to prove that intersection has a stop sign that everyone blows anyway, and realistically, if they're doing that on two fifty-one, why won't they do that on Dale?
That's true, that's true, that's true. Um, so I'll get to the one that, that kinda throws it the other way. So one of the concerns is parking behind a driveway on the opposite side of the street does have significant damage reports on these narrow streets in Oglesby. That we do have, that is a real thing. So, with that, some municipalities have ordinance making it not allowed to park on the street across from another person's driveway. We do not have that. So that's one can, thing I'd like to talk about. Should we consider this change, bait because there is indeed something significant that we do have data on? That's a question. I don't know, what do you?
It leads me to say, where are they gonna park then? That's my other issue.
Yeah, cause it, it comes up, there's actually more to talk about this when it talks about, uh, the tra, so let me, let me jump on one other thing. So there's been complaints, uh, for certain streets that have had problems with, um, from, from residents, and then from our emergency vehicles, especially even with, uh, like our, our, uh, our bucket trucks trying to get through that we can't get through. A lot of them are Third Street, Dale, Glen, uh, Jones, First, Second, Hazen, Durant. There's a lot of them there. Um, there is a couple of things in the ordinance that talk about some stuff. For example, Dale, it talks about currently only from Walnut to the First Alley, and Glen, Walnut to the First Alley. I would actually recommend, if we can make the length go all the way to the Dickinson House and all the way to the Ball Diamond, but again, that's an input, and I would like to get input from residents to think if they, if that's gonna affect them negatively, because you're right, that is gonna reduce, uh, um, parking abilities. But when you go down First, Second, and Third, you will see people are weaving into traffic. Now, I don't know, is there enough parking on just one side of the street to allow that?
So I was gonna suggest one side maybe, if we have to, because they should, I, hopefully there's fitting, they can fit through there. If not, those roads are pretty tiny either way, is how I'm thinking about it.
Wha- what I would like to do is come up with a recommendation that we think is best on stuff like that, and I would like to send a letter out to every resident that lives on those and solicit input, because I don't know what they're think, I don't know if they're thinking of, uh, hey, I, I really need that for parking, that's terrible, or actually, I would prefer just to park on the other side of the street if, if my entire side is clear. I'd like to hear what the residents have to say about that, because I'm not trying to write ordinances that make people's lives harder or worse, it's just about trying to make things safer and better.
So I think we should do the review first, so the council knows where the neighborhood's leaning, that kinda stuff, cause we go through all this, and we get a resounding, oh god, no, we don't wanna lose our parking, or it's about time, and either way, and then the ordinance is in the middle, it's still gonna be a problem, and we're still gonna have to redo it.
So when you say look into that, do you mean by sending the letters to the residents?
Yes.
Okay.
On that, on that part of the street.
So here's what I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to send for stuff like that. I'd like to send for First, Second, Third, Hazen, and Durant. Um, there was a, Jones, I had a resident talk to me about Jones Avenue, and I took a look at it, it's actually already in the ordinance. Joe, from Mormon to Crockett, it's actually already in the ordinance, there's just no, there's no parking signs there. So I don't know if they never went up, or somebody took them down, so we're gonna put the parking signs back.
There's, there's been parking, uh, parking on one side of the street, on Fitzgerald for forty years, uh, and it, uh.
I'm on the bad side.
You know, I, I, I always parked my vehicles in my driveway. Uh, I had a neighbor, uh, a- and I didn't have a problem, what, where are they gonna park? They were parking on the, uh, on the north side of the street, in front of my house.
So this, so, so this is the truth here, so that's another thing I got. There is no record of accidents the past eighteen months from cars damaging other cars because roads are too narrow. So, so that is true. So then the question is.
How many near misses have we had?
That, you know, that I don't know. I can tell you, when I drive through there, I struggle through there, and we had problems with trying to get emerg- emergency vehicles, ambulances, one of them, fire trucks, and even now getting our bucket trucks through there. So just because an accident didn't happen, doesn't mean it's still not a problem. But I just wanna make, be truthful with you, there is no accident. So, I mean, there is not data to support to do that. So that's why I still think I'd like to send letters out to residents and get their input.
I'm also worried that it'll be like Florence Street, and it'll become a drag strip from one end of town to the other. I'm not, that, that Florence Street, I don't know if you've noticed, but that happens a lot more than people know, and that's another issue I had.
Somebody come down, come down Florence Street today, and I thought, wow.
Yeah, so that's another, I'm not saying c- cars in the streets slow people down, but I don't see that on First, Second, or Third Street like I see on Florence, so.
I don't wanna put, start putting speed bumps in everywhere too, cause I've been in towns that had speed bumps everywhere, and my god.
Yeah, speed bumps are also terrible.
So what I was thinking right now is first, that, First, Second, Third, Hazen, and Durant, to start with that, is if anybody has any other recommendations, I was gonna work on sending letters out and, and go from there. Does anybody have other streets that they, or know are problem areas that I could start trying to solicit input from?
Actually, what you're saying, what the letter is saying.
So the letter will basically.
Survey, uh, input from the residents on, um, you know, either pro or con to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, my, my personal concern is that, uh, you know, if we damage a car, we can get it fixed. Uh, if we, uh, if we hit some little kid that runs out between two cars on both sides, that's another matter.
I agree. Oh, did it not say Glen? I thought I said, oh, I didn't. Hazen, Durant, and I, I mentioned Glen up earlier, yeah. So Glen would be on there too, yes. That's the one that I think from the baseball diamond. That, that's where I started noticing the problem a lot.
So issue, that, my issue with Third Street, if we're targeting baseball parking, where are they gonna park? It's, cause that road's full all the way.
So what I was gonna recommend for, for those, because there's already nobody that lives, there's less people that live on the south side of that street because of the baseball diamond stuff, so I was just gonna say the south side of the street, no parking.
Don't, for, for baseball up there, uh, I, I know we got the Dickinson House, but isn't there a, isn't there parking uh, all the way down to the men's softball diamond? Isn't there a lot, just?
There is a lot of parking there, but.
Just east, east of the, uh, Little League Diamond?
From what I understand, most of that's full when they're playing games, and plus, with T-ball and then the two fields, from what I understand, that's pretty much all filled up.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't really had any problems parking.
I would ask Bobby about that, but I think Bobby told me that's all the way to the next, um, whatever, what's the field behind the water tower over the, one almost to the.
Is that the Junior League one, or whatever it's called?
No, I'm talking about the, the totally different park.
Oh, Memorial Park, or?
No, going west on Third Street, it's gonna be on your right, the iron plants across the street.
Dolphy Field?
No, the one across the street from the iron plant, the.
Oh, Courtyard Park?
Yeah, Courtyard Park, I'm trying to remember the, what everyone else called it, but that, like, they'll be all the way down there parking, yeah, the tennis courts, that's what, it's a tennis courts.
When they open, when they open up the backside, I, I haven't run into any parking problems, but the problem I have, when, when I travel that, is, uh, is the, the sheer number of, uh, people that are traveling. So, so when there's so many people coming and going, and then you have that narrow gap because there's people parked on both sides of the street, that's where I'm concerned. And that's why I asked them, when they originally went back six months, I said, can we go back a little bit further, cause there's no baseball this year? So we went back eighteen months, and there's still no record of accidents from that. So, so the question is, are we just adding things that make things more difficult, or does it actually make things safer?
I, I'm just gonna say, if we look at Third Street, I think we should look at adding more parking somewhere for the baseball diamond, if that's what we're gonna do, because now they'll be parking two to three blocks north at least, just to go back to the stadium, that kinda stuff, or the field.
Oh, so how about I start with sending out some letters? Um, I'll draft something up with all the streets, everybody will get the same one, and we'll see if we can get some input, and then we'll, we'll take a look at it.
I would talk to the baseball board too, and.
Are you gonna, are you, you wanna limit the survey to just the streets that you mentioned?
So the only, so keep in mind, if, if we limit the parking on there, um, for the, the biggest people that's probably gonna affect is the people that have homes that live there, that use that for parking daily. That's my biggest concern for them. I, I don't know for, I've never had, any game I've gone to, I've never had to park in the street. There's always either enough parking in the one right in front of the field, or on the far, far side of the field, uh, for, for myself anyways. But the problem always been the traveling in and out. So, um, and then the last item, so, so, and then it talks about the, the driveway, so. So that is a problem. If, if we did the parking behind the driveway, made that an ordinance that they can't do that, that would be a problem if you also, also at the same time, limit parking on one side of the street, because now that means you're limiting even more parking than what people can do. So.
Well, if you had, if you had, uh, driveways, um, right opposite to each other, where are they gonna park?
I'm saying one or the other, by the way. I'm not saying we're gonna do both of these.
Yeah, so I'm recognizing there's a problem. That's what, there's not a right or wrong for this, that's why I'm, I'm trying to solicit input of what we wanna grab from people. Um, and then the last thing we talked about was, uh, should we, so right now, there's, the ordinance says that up until every corner, there's a fifteen-foot no-parking zone. That's where you see like the yellow paint and all that stuff, which we'll, we'll go refresh for the ones that need to. But the question is, should we expand past the fifteen-foot no-parking standard from corners on Walnut from side streets? Because the, the side streets that come out into Walnut, they're so close to the proximity of the buildings because of the downtown area, it's very difficult for residents to, uh, to turn, you know, left or right. It's very difficult for residents to uh, to turn, you know, left or right into traffic because you can't see far. So I'm wondering if, if there's a value in ex, in trimming that parking, no parking zone a little bit larger to give more view.
That's a good question. I, I, I don't know how many more feet would help vision.
That I don't know. That I don't know. I, I, I'd like to get a study on that a little bit to see if it's any value in that. Um, because I know that some of the games I've come in and out from, I've had a lot of near misses.
Yeah.
So again, it's all about trying to find ways to make things safer and better for people.
I, I'm just thinking, the roads I'm thinking about on Walnut are real, real tight as it is. So either way, you're gonna be getting close to people, but I don't, if.
I don't know if expanding from fifteen to twenty feet there is valuable. I mean, cause taking five feet off, yeah, that's one extra car that you take, you know, what, half a car that you take out per intersection, that, that's less parking that's available. So does it, does it hurt the parking that's on there? Maybe a little bit, but does it make things safer? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to wait for these. I, I know this sounds, the funny thing is, we're, we're doing all this discussion right now at a time where we have a real problem going on the city. But I, I did wanna have this at a working meeting to try to discuss these type of things to see if we can make things better because of it though. How about I start with the letters first and we'll go from there?
Yeah, let's see that.
We'll move on to number eight. Hold a discussion regarding ambulance service.
Well, we had placed on file um, um, meeting or two ago uh regarding being able to increase um, a couple of people in the ambulance service to be able to work over a thousand hours. Uh, this would make it easier to safely schedule people to work the ambulance. Um, I, at that time, we knew that it would also affect the IMRF paying in for that piece, which can be costly. I have the information that that would be per month a hundred and fifty dollars per person that we increased over a thousand hours. Um, and so I know that we're a little bit leery of, of spending extra money, extra dollars. So I looked at other options of what's going on. I've talked to uh, the person in charge. Uh, actually, I talked to Chief Assidor over in LaSalle regarding how they are running their service. Um, there, so I ta, I called them and let's see, what is their name? I can't even remember their name. Uh, Par- Paramedic Services of Illinois, PSI. So I talked with PSI, they have, know us, they've actually been contracted by us in the past. I don't know how long ago, but somebody had reached out to them before. Uh, so they put together their budget. Um, what they would do is uh, they would have all administrative and operational costs, hiring costs, background checks, and fit-for-duty physicals, employee compensation, holiday pay, um, paid time off, sick time, bereavement leave, health insurance, flex spending, life insurance, disability, uh, if, employee assistance program, service awards, fire rescue gear, et cetera. So what they are proposing would be exactly what they have in LaSalle. Uh, so there would be that sameness and if we ever need to get to a point where we're operating out of one, we've got some sameness with LaSalle. Their cost is um, forty thousand dollars per month or four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the year. Now, that sounds like a little bit of a sticker shot, but you know, back track.
Not, not really, to tell you the truth.
So I looked at uh, last year's um appropriations or budget or whatever when we got back. The ambulance salaries were three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two. And then the additional transfer pays were a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five, bringing us up to four hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven. And then.
What was that number again, Carrie?
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Plus, they um, the billing service. The billing service is twenty-two thousand, um, twenty-two thousand, zero thirty-three, bringing up a grand total of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty. So that was our expenses. I don't, I'm not talking about other expenses of the ambulances. I'm just talking about payroll um and billing services because this company does all the billing as well. So the difference is, we have four hundred and eighty thousand for the year from this um company or we have four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty, what we spent last year. So it's, the difference is twenty-two thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not that big of a.
So we would still own the ambulances or do they own? Okay.
Isn't, isn't the problem now, we pay competitive wages. We do, uh, this is all part-time except for the people that work over a thousand hours. And except for the, the director, uh, they just get pension credits.
No.
Over a thousand hours.
Yeah, so we have two EMTs or par, param, I'm not sure what they are, paramedics. And then we have the director, which is, all three of them are on pensions currently.
Yeah, the, 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 the reason she needs two more people is she, she can't get people to, to fill slots. So therefore, she's working over sixty hours a week. Uh, I guess our dilemma is uh, do we give her the, the two? So she don't have to work sixty hours a week and continue to service and then I guess look at ways that uh, how we can uh, to improve it. I, I don't know.
Right, and, and what it boils down to is, we need an ambulance service. And if we need an ambulance, we, I feel we need an ambulance service and therefore we need to support how that ambulance, whatever it takes. Now, support it which way? By contract, by the current system and, and add a few more people, that's gotta be this decision here.
You're the, you're the, you're the medical expert. When do you do, when you do transfers? It all depends on what level of transfer, transfer you have on how you have to staff it.
Correct.
So my next question is, okay, uh, use Tommy for an example. They gotta run him down to Peoria uh, because he's got a fractured leg. He uh, uh, he slipped and fell on, on the ice and, and, and fractured, broke his leg. They can't do the surgery uh locally, so they have to go to, to take him to Peoria. So we just have to have maybe a lower level of uh, of ambulance staffing to transfer him to Peoria.
Actually, in that case, I wouldn't because he'd be at high risk for pulmonary embolism and be on opioids on the way down.
Oh, boy.
Especially care because.
I think I take some, what I was, what I was, what I was trying to, give me an.
That was a bad, that was a bad.
Give me an example where you're, where you don't, where you could just have a, an EMT. Uh, and then we can use uh, uh, his, his case, what, what, how they would have to staff it.
I, I, I just have to tell you that many reasons why you're getting transferred to another hospital is because you need higher level of care. And so because you need higher level of care, you normally need to have a paramedic onboard. That's, you know, and sometimes it's two. You have the driver and two.
Well, yeah, whatever, yeah, I understand that some of this is required and this is, this is what's causing the, the problem.
Yeah, the transfers that is, I'm going from this nursing home to the hospital to have something done. Those types of transfers require a low level, lower level.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just worried this is gonna, so I'm gonna use the water department for example. Now that we have a third party, it's because we weren't be able to afford and be competitive. So that's why we have a third party managing our water service. Not saying it's gonna be anytime soon, but if you keep adding more and more pensions and more and more benefits to this, I, I see, foresee in the future that topic is gonna be, well, we, we can't afford to have our own. We need to have a third party manage it just because of pensions alone. And realistically, our pension, we pay a percentage of salaries to our pensions and it went up dramatically this year because of the, the early buyouts, that kinda stuff. We had a lot of people retire in the last year and a half, two years. And that's what will consistently continue to go up, especially now that rates are at zero. They're, I don't know how they're gonna be fi, finding bonds that pay anything unless they're buying thirty-year bonds right now. Because real, realistically, in the next two to three years, I feel our pension liability as a percentage of our payroll will continue to go up because I don't know where they're gonna be finding returns in, in the current environment of where we're at. And that's what worries me the most is we, we expanded so much that we can't even really afford it, be competitive, that kinda stuff. We have to look for a third party to come in and take it over and clean it up, that kinda stuff. That's why I have a hard time saying, let's, let's add more pensions, that kinda stuff right now.
I understand why you're saying that.
Cause it's.
Carrie, Carrie, let me ask you. Doesn't IVCC have a, I know they got a nursing program out there. Don't they have a uh, program uh, for EMTs and, and how you progress up through there?
But I really don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked to see, I, they used to, so I would imagine.
Well, I was just, just looking. Maybe we could uh, uh, reach out and see if there's a partnership uh, that we could develop between the college and our ambulance service. Uh, I, I look at it, that we got basically two issues. Uh, one to, to address the uh, uh, situation. What we, what we have here is that uh, we got a director that's working over sixty hours a week. Somehow we gotta get in a situation where we can get people to, get people to work. And the other is uh, you know, to look, look at long-term.
Definitely.
What we can do, we have to be able to, uh, we, we need an ambulance service.
I believe we do. I don't wanna have to wait until LaSalle.
We gotta be able to, to fund it.
And so revenue-wise, is, do the insurance pay, companies pay the same price for every ambulance service? Do some bill more? These are, these are some of the questions I, I personally wanna meet with the director and ask about and see. Because that, that's one of my questions is, where's the numbers, where's the problems, that kinda stuff and.
Yeah, um, actually, if you're Medicare or Medicaid, uh, you're gonna get reimbursed the same price.
Okay.
It's uh, the private insurances, like you and I have, that are if-year. Like they may only pay one-third and then you're gonna leave two thousand, three thousand dollars for that person to.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Can I ask, when you're talking about those revenues, are those all listed under that, the section called receipts ambulance? Or is there another se- section? The, it's weird that the ambulance is in the general fund. Uh, it's not, that it doesn't have its own separate fund. I mean, the pool has its own separate fund because there's a revenue and expenditure scene, but the ambulance is not, it's in the general. So I'm looking through, the only, the revenue one I see is receipts ambulance. Is there another portion of that somewhere that's other than that?
I don't think so.
That's when, okay.
So that's when they come specifically to the office to pay for that?
So is there another section that the, that the ambulance brings in first, that's on the revenue thing that I don't see here?
Just, we, we have an audio problem or?
She, she doesn't have a mic.
Okay.
Yeah, can you describe that?
Those that you see on there under receipts ambulance, from what I understand is when um, residents come to City Hall to make a direct payment here at City Hall. They have outside services, NGS and Pay Plus that they pay through them, which go directly to the bank and then get credited to the ambulance.
Uh, so is there another set of revenue stream that's listed on the, the general fund that, that I'm not seeing here?
Wouldn't be in the general fund, it would be in the ambulance fund, which is Fund Thirty-three.
What, was, what page is that?
It's, it's Fund Thirty-three.
I didn't print, there's sixty pages, I didn't print all of them out. I almost missed that one. Because I see the ambulance has, in the general fund, it has an expenditure section starting at one dash thirty-three. So that's why I was wondering if it didn't have its own fund. So I might not have all the data here actually. Alright.
And this is exactly why I asked Tommy Mike when I got a statement.
Hey, go for it. I'm not worried.
Well, see, I wish I had more stuff, cause I wanna, I wanna say something that's actually very positive first. Uh, again, I don't have everything here, so, but just comparing what I see. I see receipts, ambulance, five hundred and twenty, and this is fiscal, fiscal year ending uh, twenty nineteen. Receipts, ambulance, revenue, five hundred and twenty-four thousand and revenue was, or sorry, expenditures was six hundred and thirteen thousand. So by looking at that, it looks like it had a ninety thousand dollar loss. However, I know we talked, I know you, we talked about a year ago that you're looking at doing some different things or whatever. Um, and the twenty-twenty-one, it goes from five hundred and forty-six thousand revenue to five hundred and twenty thousand dollar uh expenditures. That is a hundred and ten thousand dollar difference in just that. So again, I'm not saying we had a ninety thousand dollar, I don't know, cause I, I don't have that data. What I'm saying is in just those two alone, I'm seeing a hundred and ten thousand dollar difference in just a year. So I don't know if that was.
Our goal was to get kinda like a break even, you know, we need the service.
That'd be perfect.
You know, and after expenses and, yeah.
So, so there's two things about this. One, first of all, whatever changes you made just to those things, if that was you or somebody else in your business, fantastic job. That really is fantastic. So the second part is, I guess I don't know all the revenues to see what the lost profit is because that is, and again, I'm not saying we need to go to a different thing. But I'm just saying, th- this isn't like the parks department or, or the pool where that, those departments operate at a loss because they're, they're there to give something to the city, you know what I mean, to provide a service. Um, the, the difference is, different cities operate differently than us. So I think it's, it's valuable to have the conversation that I don't know what their profit is to. And I'm not saying we're here to profit off an ambulance. That's not what I'm trying to say. But I remember like some of the things you've told me in the past is, we have a better service that we provide. So if we don't profit as much from other cities and it's, and we can quantify that we actually have a better service, I'd feel fantastic about that.
Right, um, and I know you had mentioned something like, you know, mortality rates. We, that's something you don't know. We, due to HIPAA, we don't have that kind of information back that this person survived, this person didn't. They have, they have what they know in the ambulance.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's a way to get that data, cause you know, if I found out that, that we had a three percent increased uh, survival rate for heart attack or something like that, that is something that I get this, that we can say, yeah, we might not make as much as another municipality near us, but you run an Oglesby Ambulance, you got a better chance that you're gonna survive. That is something that has value.
Right, that, and they don't have like satisfaction surveys that you see in medical, in the hospital or in a clinic. I've not seen that extended uh, towards ambulance services. And I, I've seen some types of satisfaction surveys, but the amount of dollars it takes to deploy it and get the information back. And there are so few ambulance services to be able to compare yourself to, to get a ranking, that it's not.
Well, I figured if you had ten years worth of data, you might be able to get something out of that. But yeah, I don't know how hard it is to get the data. I'm just saying, we can compare profit and loss statements to how different ones operate. So I would love to see if there's a way that we can compare how we say somebody's better or, or, I don't wanna say worse. Better or not is proficient is, is we could be.
Right, you know, I, what I hear is our response time is quick. Well, yeah, because you have somebody in the station. Whereas, you know, like Utica doesn't have anybody in there after, um, on the, on the evening shift. They're on call, but you know, they have to go from their home to the ambulance and then the ambulance to the response.
Response, that's a good thing. That's something that we can quantify at least. So I would, I would, I'd really like to see something like that because again, I don't wanna be the person to, to raise the question if we should be changing how we do things. Um, but because we're talking about dollars and cents, I, I do think there's a, the, the discussion has to happen about that. I really do. Um, and, and if the answer is truly Oglesby residents, there is a higher benefit uh, for having this, how we operate, um, then maybe it doesn't have to be something that we have to worry so much about the dollars and cents of it, if it equals out. Cause it's something that we provide. You know what I'm saying?
I know. It's sometimes hard to qualify though, the, the. I know, it's sometimes hard to qualify though, the touchy feely things. And that's what I get feedback on is the touchy feely things, you know?
The issue with insurance companies is this could be, they're picking up someone today, it could be two to three years before we see any kind of payment if it's a, literally, if it's a car accident, it could be two years before. That's my problem with P and Ls because.
I see.
The checks in the mail is kind of what we're gonna be figuring out, because we don't know when we're getting it or.
There's a lag.
Yeah, there's a dramatic lag in the ambulance, that's another problem that we have with that department compared to the pool where you pay every time you go, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, well, the reason I like to ask these questions now is just like what you said, Tommy, eventually, if, if the cost becomes so much, are we gonna be forced to make a change later down the road because of that?
And that's my, that's your.
Yeah.
Look, look at the police pensions right now, I'm not saying IMRF's gonna be as bad, but.
Well, the difference with police pension is, that is a statewide issue that's going on. So what, but the difference with the ambulance is, there are people that are operating differently than we are right now. So, so they might not have that exact same, so that's why there's a difference between that, I think. I don't, I don't know if they're a hundred percent comparable, that's why.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, I would be happy to get back with this service. And by the way, I tried looking at other services similar to PSI and I really couldn't find anything that came this way.
Yeah.
So for comparison, and I guess because LaSalle has it, I felt comfortable enough.
Yeah.
Cause they're a proven factor in LaSalle as being acceptable for their ambulance service. I can actually have a meeting with these people and get a little more information from them with the face to face and.
That'd be good.
Yeah, I can tell you, I really appreciate that. Nobody likes to have these kind of conversations, I know everybody's kinda guarded when it comes to employees and stuff like that. So I understand that, and, and I can tell you, at least from my perspective, I appreciate that you're, you're looking into these, they're hard things to quantify, and I look, I appreciate that you're, that you're doing it so we can at least talk about it.
Because I truly appreciate every single one of the personnel on the ambulance service. I know that they do their very, very best and I hear so many positive comments, so many, I can't even begin to enumerate along.
Carrie, is, are you suggesting then that we, we do a short-term fix and then look down the road or?
I hate to go into your IMRF, I just, I, when we just sat here and said, we gotta watch our spending, I, I almost feel paralyzed by it, but there is a twenty-two thousand dollar, twenty, almost a twenty-three thousand dollar difference between them and, and what we're spending here. I'm like that, that we would do a short-term fix and allow two people to work over a thousand and then do a, a good investigation with this. And if that's what we wanna do, perhaps we would do that at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Does our ordinance limit us on how many part-time employees we can have? If that's something, is that a possibility to expand that?
Yeah, we've tried.
And that's, so that is, that is, so that is the thing that's becoming so problematic.
That was the concept.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a short-term, short-term solution until we can get into it deeper and make a decision on what we're gonna do.
So we're gonna add pensions and then we might, so you're saying, give them pensions and then we might get rid of them in four months? That's kind of a slap in the place to those employees that we give it to if we're gonna go down that road. I'm just, hey, hey, we're gonna give you a pension, but four months from now, we might just take you, take away the ambulance service. You know, like that's, I don't know if we wanna go down that road either.
Well, so the, is it that we don't pay enough to be able to get part, part-time help in? Because the concern I have is, if, if we add a pension service, that's, that's our solution is to give somebody more hours specifically, because the real problem is, we can't get other workers. Well, that means whenever that, people that we have that we're relying upon leave, we still have the problem that we can't find people.
If, if I understand things correctly, the, the difference between the Oglesby ambulance service, it's actually the city runs it. That's why we're required that if they work over a thousand hours, they fall under the, under the IMRF pension. Where Peru, Spring Valley, or LaSalle has got the contract. But the ambulance service itself operates and the cities give them X amount of dollars to run. Not, not getting into a long, drawn out, that, that's how they run it. It's, you know, there's a lot of options for us and for them.
Well, that's, that's an option I think we should investigate, I'm gonna say first, to see if we legally can do that or what it would take to move it to that. Cause then that would, that would change a lot of the equation.
That makes, that makes, that, that takes the pension issue off the table. And it's my understanding those people can work full-time. I don't know if, if they get other benefits.
No, if they're not employed, if they're not city-employed or city-run.
No, 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 I mean, does the ambulance service itself provide some type of a, a, a medical insurance? A 401K?
The PSI, the contracted group does do all that, health insurance, dental insurance, flex spending, life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, disability, workman comp. So, I mean, that's by a contract.
Do they, do they make competitive wages?
Yeah.
Can PSI give us people when we need them for shifts?
We talked about that and that isn't part of their.
They don't do that anymore? I believe they used to.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
They don't make money off of it. They don't just slip some person in because we have a hole.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I thought that, that, you know.
So would IML be able to help us find companies that do that maybe? The municipal league, would they help us find maybe companies to do that? I don't know who, what resource, I'm guessing it'd be IML though, that would.
Well, Tommy, if you're asking, I mean, I don't know if the IML would have a list of ambulance service.
Okay.
I mean, they may, I, I can call and ask.
And the issue with, with slipping in a contract person from whoever, you know, each hospital has different protocols for how they want their ambulances run. And so it's not like they would, this person who slipped in would know those protocols for St. Mary's and Street or their ER or Ottawa or any of those things. So it's kind of a, a risk issue or safety issue because they don't know the protocol.
And so they, again, I've, I've ridden in an ambulance once, I don't even remember it, but. So, they, all, all our employees go into the hospitals every time they pick up someone or drop someone off? Okay, I, I didn't know, if there's just one person that went in and grabbed them, no?
No, the whole crew goes in.
Okay.
To help load and everything, but, but even that, what I'm saying about the protocols is, if you have, are having chest pain, the protocol is to do oxygen oximetry, aspirate under the tongue and, you know, so you have a whole list of things that you have to do for that patient. That falls under protocols and different hospitals have different protocols for a stroke, for a heart attack, for this and that.
And do we usually take people anywhere besides IVCH? Like if I, if I said, hey, I wanna go to St. Margars, will they take me there? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, they will.
I don't know how it goes, so I'm asking these questions now while I can.
Because you have a choice of where you wanna be treated.
Okay.
But sometimes if it's life-threatening, they'll take you to the closest.
Okay, I just. We ready to move on?
Well, I was gonna say, what, what are we gonna do with it? I mean, I, I can continue to do research and, and get, you know, put together some type of justification or proposal. But we're gonna need something for the interim because I can't let my director do that many hours. It's just, she's not complaining, let me put it that way, she's not complaining at all. But I see that as just a way for easy burnout from putting in sixty hours a week with some routine.
She's been doing this for, what, eight years now?
You know, we can't, you can't fault Kathy for her dedication.
No, she's gonna be very good.
She does a heck of a job.
Again, my only concern is, by, by doing this, it, it puts us closer and closer to that point that, like Tommy talks about, that we at some point in time might be forced to say, we can't afford the service. And then we are forced to go a different route. And the thing is, if this is actually a great service that is to Oglesby residents, that is better than the other options, I'd hate to lose that by increasing the cost to where we can't afford it. That's, that's my ultimate concern.
I don't wanna lose those warm fuzzies that I hear routinely from people who have used the ambulance service.
I mean, cause like, for example, the pool, we, it relates. We, we know the pool operates at a loss, right? And we, we have an expectation, whether that's thirty or fifty thousand dollars at a loss. But if, if the pool somehow jumped up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss per year, we'd probably make, making some changes, you know what I'm saying? So, so that's my concern, at some point in time, if, if, if it becomes more of an issue, we'd be forced to make, whether that's this administration or future administrations, I just don't wanna set them up for, for failure.
And if we do go down this route, I'm, I'm gonna want a little bit of changes, you know, looking at the numbers. We're gonna look at the numbers a little bit harder now that we have to pay for these other two employees. And that's what everyone needs to understand. If we go down this route, I'm gonna try to figure out where we can save those two pensions somewhere else in the operation or what, what it needs to take to cut down to be able to afford it. Because again, we're just, we're just kinda getting by right now and it's, it's kinda worrying me right now because of where we're at. And hopefully, everyone pays their taxes on September fourth or, it's gonna be a tough time, let me tell you, that's where, where I'm at.
Kathy, it's, it's my understanding they're not opposed to sitting down and, and, and looking at, at how we can improve the operation. And that may be a broad statement.
That, that is a broad statement, so I, I think maybe I need a little more clarity.
I think what he's asking is if there's other ways to, to tighten that up. And I'll say, just from the one year of data that I have, again, just the limited amount of data, it looks like you've done some fantastic stuff. So there, there might be a lot more room for, for whatever magic you, you've been doing to, to make that happen.
Fairy dust.
Is that, whatever it is, if you got some more fairy dust for our electrical problems, you could spread that around.
Oh, yeah.
So what do you guys wanna do?
Let's put it on there.
Well, you're absolutely opposed to adding anybody to the IMRF.
That, number one. Alright, I guess I'll be in the middle, one, one, I'll take, one.
One.
Alright, but again, we're gonna magnify glasses, numbers, that kind of stuff going forward now, because that's. And we're, and again, we're gonna start having to look at other options, bringing in new people, that kind of stuff at this point, because.
Oh, I agree, and I, and I know Kathy has done a, a very good job of trying to do that in the past, but we'll take a look at it and do another hard hit.
Okay.
So I know what I'm doing, you want me to edit that ordinance and take the two to one and, and then get it over to Amy tomorrow? Cause it's just really only changing a few words in the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Cause we'll have to put it on file then, cause it's a different ordinance and we won't be able to pass it till the first meeting in September.
Correct.
Okay.
Moving on, to number nine, hold a discussion and develop a social media policy.
Uh, do you want me to take this, cause I kinda sort of threw this thing out. What, what engendered this was, I received a call from the clerk's office about a post that had been made on the Oglesby Facebook page that I thought could have certainly been interpreted as being a possible libelous statement. I mean, it, in so many words, was accusing a, a person of, what I guess I would broadly, I guess, characterize as theft by deception under Illinois law. And the clerk's office sent it over to me, I looked at it, I said, I think we oughta take this down. Because it's our Facebook page, you know, we don't wanna get drug into some, some lawsuit. I didn't think that was really the call that, you know, I should be making, but it was either leave it up there, I thought, and potentially expose us to something, or just tell them to take it down. So I said, take it down. And that kinda led me to thinking, well, should we have a social media policy? Now, I think in your personnel manual, you've already got a social media policy vis a vis your employees. But this is, you know, if, if we're gonna allow people to post on our Facebook page, are we gonna have some guidelines? And I think we, we have one of two choices, and I'm not on Facebook, I don't know anything about Facebook. I'm assuming, I mean, one option would be just make it so that nobody can, can this be done? Nobody can post a comment on our Facebook page. Now, that may limit the effectiveness of the, you know, if you get something out, you know, Jason, like what you're talking about, the, the parking thing, you know, maybe that's, maybe that letter's something you want posted on Facebook, just in case somebody wants to, you know, wants to chime in. If we're gonna allow people to chime in, and that's a political decision, that's not a legal decision, then I think it would make some sense to have some social media policy that it isn't, somebody calls up the city attorney and he says, yeah, you should, he or she, she says, yeah, you should take this down. That's not, that's not a good way to do this. So when I called IMR, the IML, they had given me some handouts from one of the, from the municipal league meeting of last year, two thousand and nineteen. But I, they also pointed me to the social media policy for the city of Naperville. And I, I don't know if I included in what I sent you, the social media policy for the city of Cankey Key. I, I think Cankey Keys may be more, you know, a little bit more overkill than what we need. But I, I did think that we should have some, you know, some social media guidelines in there so that people know that if you cross these lines, we're gonna reserve the right to take down, to take down your post. Also, when we're thinking about whether we want to let people, you know, post on, you know, on our Facebook page, we're probably creating a record that's foible. So, you know, we probably should have, not probably, we should have a policy whereby, you know, maybe somebody in the clerk's office, you know, every morning checks the comments and just downloads them and makes a copy and puts it in a three-ring binder, so, cause I think eventually those, those things will.
I, I think it archives itself though, pretty much, as long as we don't delete it.
Yeah, that's the first I heard.
Archive, yeah.
Well, then we don't have to worry about it. But I, I just want everybody to know, it's, it's a record, okay? We're gonna, it's, it's a public record.
Unless you delete it, it stays out there forever, don't worry, Jim.
So this is the first I heard about that, I remember, so I seen the, the sample policies that you sent and, and at first I'm thinking, that's, that's, that's great. I, I'd love to be able to have a, a set of guidelines that we can do. But then the more I thought about it and the more, there, there's two problems with that. One, I, I don't know if the clerk's office should be monitoring nothing, you know, they gotta monitor comments all the time for two reasons. One, if there's ones that violate the policy and they have to delete it, that's one problem. And the other problem is, a lot of times, people ask questions on there, on, in a comment and they get upset if, if somebody doesn't answer the question. Well, I, I don't know if they have to be, you know, I, I did that one time and I'll never do that again, let me tell you. You know, I tried, tried to make the situation better and it, it just doesn't. So the other problem is, you know, I like it, I, I see the ones that they send in a message question. I actually think that's better than people calling the office because there's, the, the office is just swarmed with calls all the time. If they get a message on the computer, that they can answer it at their, at their leisure. But I don't know if it's a good idea for the, for the office personnel to have to monitor Facebook for comments that, that we'd be required to delete and then monitor it for questions to be able to respond publicly to things. I don't know if that should be in their wheelhouse.
I, I think questions should be through the phone or at City Hall either way because you're gonna start a debate that you'll never win on there and.
That's correct.
Are we gonna keep responding until we give up? That's why, I don't think we should do that.
I know the question. Yeah, and so, so the question came up, if we would just prevent all common. Yeah, and so, so the question came up, if we would just prevent all comments from happening, and somebody said, "Oh, that's against First Amendment rights," or something like that. I don't read it like that, and that's where I'd love to have a legal determination, because I don't think we have to provide the venue for people to have this back and forth discussion. Facebook is fantastic for being able to send posts for, oh, in, one-way information to be able to let people know. And I, I'd like to be able to use it like that, but I want to make sure that we wouldn't. I'd rather just have our policy be, "No posts allowed." That's what I'd recommend.
Yep, what, what's your deal?
No, 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 sorry, no comments allowed.
We can turn that on? Because if we hide, even if we're hiding those comments, and people are commenting, that will still be FOIA allowed, that kind of stuff. It just, it just makes us look like we're hiding details that we don't want, you know what I mean?
You know, I, I remember them, they, they told me that they had a hard time finding that, but when I, I Googled it, apparently that's a thing. You can, you can prevent comments on, on, on pages. I don't know what, how to do it, but.
Well, let, let me first answer your first question. The, the one, the first question you have to decide is whether the, the First Amendment applies. And, uh, what they look at there is, uh, whether this is a limited public forum. If it's a limited public forum, then, uh, the, the First Amendment would apply. Uh, and, uh, you, you know, we, we have to, uh, uh, you know, we, we, we can't delete something that says, uh, "Your attorney's an idiot and you ought to find a new attorney." I mean, that's, if it's a public forum, that's a public comment. And if I can't take that, too bad, you know, find, find another job. Uh, the, the, uh, uh, the, the Naperville thing just tried, that's why I liked it better than, than the one I found from Kankakee. Uh, it, it just said, "We're gonna," uh, it, it said, "The following, uh, forms of content shall not be allowed for posting and shall be subject to removal." Now, I guess this begs the first question of who, who's going to be responsible for monitoring and removing it. But it was, you know, comments unrelated to the purpose and topics of the page. I'd probably stay away from deleting a lot on that, because I, I, I think that could become a slippery slope. But defamatory threatening or profane language, you know, I think that's clearly not protected. Uh, content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates discrimination on the basis of race, creed, age, et, et cetera. Uh, sexual content or links to sexual content, solicitations of commerce. You know, I don't know, there, there's no First Amendment right that we have to require, uh, after a storm like this, somebody posts on social media page, so-and-so, uh, you know, lawn care, "We do, uh, we'll, we'll handle your storm-damaged trees," on our Facebook page. Now, I, I don't know that we've had those types, types. Well, I'm just saying, I don't know we've had those types of problems, but if it's open posting.
Yeah.
You know, somebody could do that.
I think the closest thing we had for that was when we posted the licensed contractors with the city. You know, that's not necessarily an advertisement, that's just letting people know what we have on register here.
He's talking about comments though, I believe.
Yeah, I'm talking about somebody, you know, I'm, I'm in the, I'm in the tree removal business.
Oh, if somebody, somebody makes a comment, they're trying to solicit, I got you.
So I, I, on this, on the Oglesby, Spring Valley, Peru, La Salle Facebook pages, I put on, you know, "Andrione Tree Removal. Uh, I can help you in this, uh, time of great need. Please call, you know, this number for a quote." Okay? You know, that's not protected First Amendment speech. I, I don't know that we've had that problem. Uh, you know, i- i- if you, if you don't want to go down this area, I'm not saying you have to. It's just that I didn't feel comfortable saying, "Leave this post up," because I felt it could be, could have been interpreted as alleging, it, it alleged that raffles conducted by a, a city employee, that somebody in their family always won. So I, I, I thought, I thought that, you know, by implication, that was certainly saying, "Somebody's cheating," which, which would, which would broadly be an, an allegation of theft. And, 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 uh, I, I thought, you know, that's, that's libelous if it's, if it's, if it's not true. So I just said, "Take it down." But I didn't think that really, you know, without any basis that, you know, I, I didn't want to be put in that position again, I guess, without a basis. That's what I'm, that's why I mentioned this. And if you think it's, it's, it's not needed, we don't, we don't have to do it. We, we took the one down. Uh, but like I said, that's why I kind of like, I thought, I, I would have preferred to be able to say, "Well, we adopted a policy, and that is, uh, defamatory, uh, language, so, you know, we're going to."
But are we, are, are we legal to be able to make a policy that says, "We're not going to allow comments on posts"? Is that, can we do that?
I, I think you can refuse, you can, nobody can, nobody can make any comments. You just, you post stuff on your Facebook page, and then nobody can, nobody can make a comment.
I think that's the easier thing, because any other option we take, then there's a responsibility for multiple things. They have to, they have to scan to remove things for multiple different reasons, they have to monitor it, um, and, and they have to archive it. Uh, if there's a, I, I don't know if there's a lot of value in that. If we could find a way to just skip all of that.
I think our policy should be, the only reason we're using Facebook is for public announcements, as if anything else. Emergency-wise, we need to use Code Red. I don't know if we use Code Red for this storm, but I prob- we probably should have. I don't know.
So our, uh, Code Red did come out for the, we didn't initiate it, it came from, it came from the Peru one, I believe, for the area, because everything was affected. Um, we do have a pol- our, our, what is it called? Our, our hazard communication plan does talk about different things that we post for. Uh, and I would like to talk about that a little bit. So I, I think we're great in what we do. We try to put out our public announcements, agendas, meetings, things that's useful. The things I, I'm concerned that we should stay away from is, I'm not saying they're advertisements for businesses, because they're not businesses, but like, if the, the American Legion, that's fantastic. The, the Elks, fantastic. Those are great nonprofit organizations that people know things. But when we start putting things out there that either don't reside in Oglesby or they're private organizations, whether they make a profit or not, but they're private organizations uh, asking for tryouts and things like that, I think we start going down a slippery slope. Like, why, why doesn't my organization get a shout-out for stuff like that? I'd like to, you know, by doing that, we're taking business away from radio stations, for example. Radio stations get paid to put advertisements out there. We get thousands of people that look at our Facebook page, because we're, there's value in knowing what's going on in Oglesby. So I know the, I know the office here gets a lot of calls all the time about, "Hey, can you put this up on my, on the Facebook page for this?" And I'll be honest, I don't think it should be on there.
You, you don't, you don't have a problem with putting, uh, uh, putting on, uh, "It's time to sign up for, uh, girls' baseball, uh..."
That's an Oglesby thing.
If there's, if they are city event, Oglesby ones, I, I'm going to make some people mad here, but I'll be honest, I don't think we, I'm just going to say it. I don't think we have any business promoting private league organizations. Because the problem is, if you do it for one, they're going to, you're going to start getting requests for, uh, "We want the," we, because this, this team wasn't even based in Oglesby. We're going to start getting solicitations for people from the Streeter-based, whatever baseball team, then the hockey team, then, uh, I don't even know what all the travel teams that are all out there, but I don't think we should be in business for that, for doing that. I think that's a mistake. That's just.
Well, I'm, I, I was referring to, and I'm, I'm trying to, uh, what do we have? Youth football. Uh, is it, I guess it's by town, I don't know. Uh, it's been a long time since my kids were in, in that kind of stuff. I don't know.
I don't even, do we still have youth football in Oglesby?
No.
I don't think we have it in Oglesby, I think it's.
I say, I, I thought, uh, we're not going to have it this year, I'm, I'm sure. But we, we have had it here, uh, in yours back, uh, um, they practice, uh, up by the tennis courts.
Is that parks related, is the parks involved in that, is my question?
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, to me, that's fine. Anything that's, anything that's sponsored, like, like, even if we're doing the championship for games or something like that, perfectly great, because it's, it's in Oglesby, it's things that relate to it. And it brings business and stuff like that. The only, but speaking of that, the only businesses I think we should ever put up there is like, if there's a business that has a grand opening, because, because if we start putting businesses up there as a regular basis, people are going to be like, "How come, how come this place gets more show than we do," or something like that. But like, if the mayor's doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony or something, or, or what's the?
Well, if a business is doing a fundraiser, I think we should post it too. Like, for, for an organization, you know? Like, I'm thinking they're doing the VA TV thing right now.
The what?
They're, they're, they're trying to raise money to put smart TVs in the VA for all the residents. And they're going to local businesses that are sponsoring it, and they're raising money through that local business to help.
Yeah, you know, when it's nonprofit organizations like that, and they're not necessarily private, that, that kind of is in a different slope. Like, I think the, you know, talking about tacos at the Elks is, is, or Legion, fantastic. Those are great things. Nobody's, nobody's necessarily getting money in their pocket because of that. So I think some, those events are great, but it's when there's private organizations that are looking for some type of solicitation or, or, uh, advertisement. I think we go down a slippery slope, because it's going to turn people off away from things that they don't want to see that. You know, they're going to stop following the, the page, or, or be, like, "Why am I seeing this?" Because that's, I mean, that's what I do. I'll, I'll follow a page for so long, until they start getting so many stupid posts that I don't want to see, I unfollow them. And I don't want that to happen in Oglesby, if there's good stuff that we're putting out that could be valuable to people. Then that's just my two cents.
So I think we should start writing up a guideline of what we post, how we post, who posts, and that we don't respond to any comments. That's probably one of the big ones I want.
But again, if we have comments, just.
You can't, you can't get in this thing with.
Well, so the, so the problem with not just responding to comments, that runs into the problem that Andrione talked about. We still have to monitor it to delete things that are libelous, or, or profane, or whatever, and then we have to make a record of it. I'd rather skip all of that. But again, you know, that could be a, I mean, it depends on the topic, you know?
You allow comments now, correct?
Correct. I mean, don't get me wrong, when we talk about, you know, taco night at wherever, you're not getting crazy stuff going on. But, but when we put out stuff.
A streaming city council meeting, for instance.
Yeah, I mean, it just starts a. I don't even have words for it.
Here's my issue with this. Everyone's going to say, "Now they're trying to silence us."
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's not the case.
I don't know, we, we do have public comment on agenda items and public comment later, and so that anybody's voice can be heard.
Okay, I'm, I'm just throwing out what I'm, I foresee in the future here.
You're right, there, there will be people that'll say that.
Definitely.
But again, if, the, the other option is, we have to make more man-hours for the city employees to manage that, monitor it, uh, archive it, and all that stuff. And I, I think for that reason, and, and then answer questions that are come out publicly on it, otherwise people say they're not answering us. I'd rather skip all of that, because I don't think there's value in that. If people want a real public question, we got a spot on here that people will ask, and I think we've done a pretty good job, whether they like it. You know, some people won't say they do, but even if we can't have the answer for them there, usually in the old business, we come back with the answer for them. And I, I think that's the right way to handle it.
And to, to respond about those people that are asking questions, or there's a com- maybe a negative comment and a question within it, uh, places like the hospital, you know, simply say, "We're sorry, you had this experience. Please reach out to this department, or this person, or somebody, you know, at City Hall." And, uh, normally, you don't get the phone calls. You know what I'm saying? So in order to validate your concern, we want to hear from you, and, yeah.
So you then just think we'll just go on the way we, the way we are?
Without comments.
Yeah, I think, I, I'd rather go without comments, that.
Really, the only thing I.
That'd be my vote if we're putting it up to a, a consensus.
And then we'll work on guidelines for what we post.
Yes.
Eventually.
We have some loose guidelines for that already.
Yeah.
In our, in our, what's that? That's what I'd recommend. But I don't, do we have to make a policy for that, or do we have to do an ordinance? Or, you know, is that, is that a big deal? Can we just say there's a policy, and then we just, we do it?
We'll probably approve it at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, I guess, uh, I mean, right now, you allow people to comment on Facebook. I, I just think you can just announce in the next meeting that we're not, you know, we're, we're going to not allow that now.
We can address them at City Hall through a call, email.
City Council meeting.
I just tell you that the police department has a Facebook account, and if that's a city policy, it would affect the police department. And they have found in many cities that facial comments to the police department are always crime-related.
Oh, man, now there's a, now there's another wrench in this.
We have a Facebook, uh, account of our own, and we just basically updated it, and we were. That's really the, we give crime prevention tips on there, but we didn't put out crime prevention. We really incorporated it, we totally did crime tips.
Can, can I ask if those crimes are solved because of the comments section? Uh, or is it, or do you still get that same capability with allowing people to message in, like, tips and things like that? Does it have to be public comment that, that's where, that is being said?
Like, I, I know for, what our policy is that, that's how they're getting them, they're getting them right now. They're solving the crimes right now.
Oh, man.
Would our policy affect what he does?
Yeah, I think so.
I think we'd have to make a policy, I mean.
If we say, if we say we're going to have a policy, you can't, you can't post on our Facebook page, it's going to apply to the police.
Yeah, unless.
Specify the city thing.
The city's Facebook page, because theirs is the only one. Can you specify?
Well, actually, they're part of the city, but I, I, I suppose we could.
But doesn't that mean, even if, even if we, even if we say no comments? But even if, even if we say no comments for the city's Facebook page, and we allow it for the other one, we still have to draft up a policy, and they have to find somebody to monitor that, it's the same, the same rules, right? They'd have to monitor it, delete comments that are, are not within the criteria, and then they have to archive it?
Yeah, I, I mean, this has only come up, I, I guess, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a molehill. This has only come up one time. And it's only one time that I've said, "Take it down." And the only reason I did was because when I read it, I thought that if it is false, it's arguably accusing someone of a crime, which is, is liable, is, is libelous. And that's why I said to take it down. You know, I, I don't know that it's going to require, I, I don't anticipate it would require a bunch of monitoring, unless we've got like this incident where we actually took something down. And I think then we should archive it. Uh, so I don't, I don't know that it, you know, requires anything. I, I, I think that a simple policy like Naperville, then we got the, you know, the guidelines to do it, and we're covered. If something comes up, like what caused me to raise this issue with, with all of you tonight, I, I, I felt I didn't have. I, I, I felt that it was the wrong thing to advise the city, "Oh, just ignore it." Possibly get us drug in a lawsuit. I mean, I, I don't think that was ever going to occur with this comment, but a similar comment to the wrong person could. And, uh, I, I just thought, you know, it should be taken down. And then I thought, well, you know, okay, somebody calls you on the carpet for telling the clerk's office to take it down, where's your, you know, where's your justification? That's why I kind of thought, that's what prompted me to say, "Let's look at this." And like I said, I, why don't, why don't we, we do this? Doesn't everybody just maybe, everybody got the, the Naperville policy that was included in the, why don't you take a look at that? I, I think, I mean, my suggestion would be we put together something simple like that. If Kankakee's, I think, is a little bit more detail, I, I think that's more than we have to go. That way, if we ever have this problem, you know, we've got some criteria that, you know, that we have used. It's, it's not just Jim Andrione saying, "Yeah, that's wrong, take it down." It would be, you know, we consulted with our city attorney, or whoever, and, and we, you know, we feel it violates our, our comment policy, and we're, we're taking it down.
So I'm seeing.
I don't think this is going to come up very often. It, it may ne- it, it may not come up again for a long, long time, but I just think there should be something there if it does.
There's still the other thing about the archiving and the monitoring that has to happen. So I see two sides of this coin, you know?
Well, but if, 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 again, I'm not on Facebook. If, if Carrie and Tommy are right, that unless we delete it, it's going to be there forever, then we just don't delete anything, and we've taken care of the archive.
Well, until Facebook goes belly-up, for whatever reason, just like MySpace did, or something, I, that, we talk about.
At that point, a four-hundred-billion-dollar company's going under, I'm, we'll worry about that when that happens.
So we just say, because technically, there's more social media than just Facebook. You know, there, there's a ton of them out there. That's just the, one of the biggest ones, obviously, there's.
And I'm talking about the ones that we actually.
Correct.
We are on the site.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten into the other things about, about using, uh, personal Facebook pages for, uh, promoting city, but I haven't got, uh, city business.
I got that, I guess.
There, there, that's more complicated. That can also require you to allow comments, et cetera. But that's an individual elected official's decision. I'm talking about the city. I'm just limiting this to the city's Facebook.
All right, on that topic, I guess I'll have to give you a call tomorrow and make sure I'm not doing it. But so.
Yes, Jason.
Well, I, I gotta, I put a page up, you know, to put things out every month or two.
For some reason you have a login, we all know. Don't worry.
So, so that is a great question, you know, that, that you bring that up. I don't want a login. I really don't. The reason, the reason, and I was going to actually talk about this. Um, I actually think we should probably have an elected official who actually has an admin login. And I think it probably should be you or the mayor. I know you don't want to deal with it. The reason is, that's how I got it. I, I got it originally because the only people that had it in the city left the city as an employment. So then they, they gave it to me. And then I, then I gave admin access to somebody else. And I just kind of kept the editor access because I do update things. I really don't actually want it. But I do think an elected official probably should have that access though.
For emergency circumstances?
Well, I have it be, the reason I originally had it there is one, to be able to give access to somebody else. And the second reason was if, if there was a utility service that went down on the weekend, I would make a post. Unfortunately, because we've had so much stuff happen, that's happening more often that I'd like to be doing even. So hopefully we'll get away to where elected officials won't have it. But we do have it in our, uh, communications policy that says that we approved that any elected official that wants to put something on Facebook has that right to do so. Just not, they might not be the person that has access to do it.
Okay.
So it doesn't really specify that. So I actually think somebody here should have that though.
You know, to keep this moving, my suggestion is I won't do anything now, but you know, just let me know Monday. Cause there's not, not like there's a big rush on this, but let me know Monday. And, and you know, my thought would be that we do something kind of modeled after Naperville. It's short, it's innocuous, but it's got some guidelines if in the future we ever have to take anything down.
But again, if we do that, we have to monitor it, make adjustments to it, and we have to make some type of record of it, right?
We've got to be monitoring it now because that's, that's how it got to. I, I wasn't looking on it. I didn't find it. The clerk's office sent it to me.
I, I guess that's really up to Tommy. I mean, how much man-hours do you, do you want them spending on monitoring Facebook? For part of their tasks and duties, I guess.
I think, I think we should. We don't table it here, but we should table it. I want to talk to my employees and see.
Okay.
How they feel and we'll get back to everyone on this.
Okay. I don't think there's a rush. You, you understand what I'm saying? I just think we should have something so we're not just flying blind.
Plus, I'd like to hear a little bit more about how many crimes actually get solved by, because, because that would be, I'd feel terrible if we decide we're going to not let comments. But yet, oh, Oglesby not tough on crime anymore, you know?
Okay, go to the next one. Discuss and coordinate a vehicle maintenance, retirement, or repl- replacement plan between all departments. And I think two things kind of brought this, brought this up. One, um, it seems like we were spending a ton of money on maintenance of, of older vehicles. And, uh, the other, I had a, uh, a list of vehicles, uh, that we insured. And we were in the process of going back to make sure we had all the vehicles and equipment.
Did we, did we find any ones that we're still insuring that we don't own?
Still looking through.
Okay.
Well, I just had my guys put together, I didn't know how far we wanted to go into detail on this. So I had them put together a list of every vehicle that we have in my two departments. Their qual, their, you know, what their quality is, miles, years and stuff like that. I got four regular trucks and five dump trucks and then all the special ones.
But I think we all should, well, not me because I don't have any vehicles, but the rest of you should. Look at your vehicles, assess what, kind of make a wish list, I guess we'd call it, that kind of stuff. Because we're, we're going to compile all this and then the, the real problems will be who, who gets their vehicle first? Where does it come from? That kind of stuff.
But shouldn't, doesn't the insurance company have a list of our fleet?
Yes.
So can't we go off that, that list?
We were worried the lists. Yeah, we're worried some of those vehicles are not even on the, we don't even own them anymore. So we're, we're assessing, it's almost like taking the inventory and make sure we have what we have.
We should do an annual inventory.
Yeah.
Things like that, though. We should.
We're on year one now. We're rolling.
Well, even after we do our inventory, I, I think it'd be good to try to come up with a, a game plan of when to replace these. Because here's the thing, we don't want to have to make a year where there's, that's also the year that we have to replace a dump truck, a fire truck, an ambulance and two squad cars. You know what I mean? We don't want to have to, it'd be nice to be able to spread out some of these costs over years to make sure that we have a regular maintenance thing going. Because I've heard some stories that we have, I don't know if it's in the parks department, but there's like a nineteen ninety truck or is it in the eighties or something? I'm like, holy cow. Nineties, that's not.
Looks like about ninety-six if I had a guess.
Oh, that's not bad. I got older stuff than that.
But I think we, if we're going to do this, we really should, anything else, like I'm, I'm thinking that the fire department air tanks that are about to expire, like something along those lines, do like a major expense that if we don't get a grand or funding for, we're going to have to come up with too. So it, I'm not, I'm not sure if we want to do everything over a hundred thousand besides the vehicles and try to put them all together into one kind of mesh game plan of what we're spending on. Because vehicles, some of them are, are not that expensive, but in reality, then we have other equipment that costs way more than a vehicle does. And I kind of want to keep all that together.
Are you more concerned about the special equipment, the stuff that's multiple hundred, like, so like you're talking like fire trucks, like the chipper, the street sweep, these? Okay, okay.
That kind of stuff, just because we could do the vehicle game plan and then we get three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in random other expenses in the same three, four month period. It's not going to work out well, so. And I also think we should start centralizing our buying of every, like basic stuff, toilet paper, paper towels, that kind of stuff. Because we have, every department's going everywhere and they're buying different ones that we bring in-house. We could definitely probably cut down on our expenses by centralizing a lot of our buying too. Oh, man. Thumbs up, thumbs up. All right.
All good stuff.
Okay. Uh, we need to move on?
I'm ready to roll.
Discuss possible incentives for new residents building in Oglesby.
So this kind of stems from, and I'm kind of leery to put the question out here to, to, to talk about this because this could be controversial. Um, but what happened is the mayor and I had a conversation with the head of GTI. And this is where, he's been putting out some stuff. Um, we, we kind of had a brief discussion over their expansion. And that's where they talked about that they're looking to bring in a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and sixty-plus employees. And a significant portion of them are going to be hired from outside the area. They even asked us lots of questions about, um, what kind of events, what kind of areas of town for development. Because they, they, when they hire people, they are going to be talking about Oglesby. And, and he asked a lot of questions about incentives. As a matter of fact, he talked about some specific ones that was related to other municipalities. And that's where I, I got our attorney involved and asked some questions. And found out some of those incentives weren't exactly the way he thought it worked and stuff like that. So that's what we wanted to talk about. I don't know if you want to talk about the other things that we can't do. Because I want to talk about some things that we possibly could do.
Well, I think one of the GTI, I mean, one of the things that GTI mentioned was that the village of Yorkville was, was giving incentives to, uh, uh, people who are building new homes. And I, I kind of scratched my head and said, I don't think that's allowable under the municipal code. And when I checked into it further, uh, that was not what was being done in, in, in Yorkville. Yorkville did have, uh, at least the, the economic development director told me, uh, like a, a Home Depot and a Lowe's. And I think that they, uh, gave incentives to individuals in Yorkville, uh, capped at a certain dollar amount who are making home improvements, who are buying it at those stores. And there was a cost involved also, but I mean, they, those, these were, you know, big box stores that were, I mean, they were generating a significant amount of sales tax revenue. You know, I, I don't, I don't know that there are any incentives of the type that GTI was talking about. You know, that, that could be given. Now, i- if you're talking about incentives, you know, for new residents, if you're saying we, we want to waive a, a building permit fee, you know, I'm sure you could do stuff like that. I would just caution you though, if you're going to do that, that you're going to have people here of, going to say, I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Oglesby and now I'm building a new house. And I had to pay, you know, six hundred dollars for a building permit. And somebody new's coming in and they're building a new house and you're giving them the building permit. And I've been here all my.
Yeah.
Legally, you can probably do things like that. Politically, whether you want to do it or whether that's going to cause, you know, more of a headache for you, uh, that, that, you know, that, that's, that's, that's not really a legal question, that one. That's more of a, you know, of a political question. Uh, because basically you're waiving a fee that you have the right to impose, uh, anyway, or, or not impose. You know, there's nothing that says you have to charge a building permit fee. Everybody does because there's time involved in, you know, in, in going through the building permits and making sure that, that, you know, that they're correct. Uh, but there's, there's no reason that says you couldn't, uh, there, there's nothing that says you couldn't decide. We're going to offer that as a, you know, as a free service.
And my issue is that all those houses just got built on the northwest side.
Correct.
That we, we had a lot of development in the last couple of years housing wise. And I, I don't see why now we're going to change it for, not to say for a business, but that's what, so are we going to just, are we going to choose, oh, do you have an employee ID or is this for everyone?
So, so that's, we talked about that legally, you can't just say, all right, you employees of here, you can get this benefit. That, you can't, you can't do that. So the fact of the matter is, they're going to expand, but it's going to happen. They're going to expand by a hundred and sixty employees and over half of them are going to be from outside the area from, from different skill sets and things like that. If we do nothing, I'm sure we'll get a few of them that'll go to, a lot of them will move to different areas and stuff to commute to Oglesby to work. But what I'm saying is, we could probably do some things to try to capture as, as many of them as we can uh, to expand upon not only our taxable revenue, uh, but just, just expand on our, our base that we have for people that live in Oglesby, which I'd like to be able to do. So I understand the complexity of that with people that have just built and they're like, I get, because, because I don't want to just do building permits. I'd like to look for other things that we can do that actually is substantial. I don't know if anybody, one single person would be like, oh, a six hundred dollar building permit?
See, I want to be careful also because like, I think in the discussions, the GTI folks said something like they, they, they abated real estate taxes.
Yeah.
And I said, and Jason told me that, I said, that's wrong.
Yeah.
Jason said, well, that's what they said. I said, it wasn't done. So I called Yorkville and confirmed that. And the obvious reason I knew it was wrong is because we, we would have, the city of Oglesby would have the ability to, to say, we're going to rebate back to you the city's share of the tax bill, but your, but your home, real estate tax bill.
Wasn't there one weird thing they did?
Two thirds of schools.
Wasn't there one?
And I guarantee you, you couldn't do, you couldn't do away with the schools money.
Wasn't there one weird thing they did actually do though or something? Or was that?
That was the one with they, they, they gave incentives if you, if you, uh, were making a home improvement and you bought your home improvement supplies within the, the, the village of Yorkville. But again, they had both the Menards, I'm sorry, they had, they set up a Home Depot and a Lowe's. So, you know, they were seeing, you know, sales tax. Obviously, the sales tax generated on those purchases would not have been as, you know, enough to offset what, what the city was giving. But they did do an incentive there. That's the only thing that, you know, that they did.
I just don't think if you're building a two hundred, I don't even know, was it two hundred and forty-five thousand to build a house right now in Oglesby? That might, that's probably low if I'm going to guess, but is, is a fifteen hundred dollars in sales tax incentive going to make or break it?
So that, so that's the thing. I don't, I don't know.
Like your subdivision, they're forty-five thousand a lot, I believe, is what they're going for out there right now.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't build no, no, so I have no idea.
But the, the science, I think that's what they're going for, those lots out there. So that's probably why, in the grand schemes of things, you're going to spend a quarter of a million dollars building a house. Are incentives going to make or break you or is it, again, the ambulance service, the park?
So, yeah, so I, I don't think if, by doing something that's just six hundred dollars is going to make this, to sway it. I mean, they are asking the questions and, and they're going to get the first opportunity to talk to people as they, as they come, move to the area. So.
I think we should make a welcome packet for them.
A welcome pa, okay, that's something.
That has information, you know, that kind of stuff, all the important numbers on it.
So, so that I'm already doing, because I already got like all the events type stuff, our parks, our, our lots, our development areas. I'm, I'm kind of doing like an economic developer thing that, that we would probably go out for that. So I'm already working on that. I'm just wondering if, if anybody else here thinks there's value. Because I understand that we'd probably give something up, whether there'd be utility breaks for a period of time or, or something like that. That, that could be unfavorable from, especially right now with other residents' opinions. However.
Are you saying that, that this would be an incentive for a company to come and locate in Oglesby?
I never, I never even thought, I mean, that, I mean, there'd be other people that could come here, but I was focusing just on the ones that we know are coming to the area. We can make a timeframe. The reason I say that is, you know, if we do nothing, what if all of a sudden five or ten, you know, maybe five or ten houses come up because, because they wanted to come to the area? If we give incentives, what if that makes fifteen, twenty houses happen? And in the long run, the Oglesby really benefits from that, from twenty new families that come, come to town.
I don't know what our lot inventory is though, but if we do twenty of them, that, that one will be full. That one will probably be getting pretty close and that one will start developing.
We actually have quite a bit from what, when you look at like the Deerfield Estates across Columbia. So, because I started adding them all up to give them the information and stuff like that. It's actually quite a few lots that are available yet. For, it depends on what area you look at.
Subdivision though.
In that one subdivision, yeah.
Four houses right now.
Well, the Caitlin areas, so I, I started adding them up. I don't have the number in front of me, but I was getting my, my information for him, uh, together. But I just thought it'd be valuable to have a conversation if. I understand that other residents could see this as negative, but the real benefit is the long term by adding growth to the city. So I don't, again, if I'm alone on this one, I guess.
I would rather give incentives to that business that's bringing the jobs.
Incentives to the business.
Because again, would you rather live right here or would you rather commute to go to work? I, I, again, that's a hot debate and whatever, but if they're really that worried about it, they'll stay around local in the area.
That's what I said. If we don't do any, we, I'm sure we will get some of that. But I'm just trying to see what methods we can do to capture even more of that.
And what's, what's the average salary going to be out there is my next question. Because again, you're building a quarter of a million dollar house. This isn't.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go into those little details, obviously, at the meeting.
Not to be offensive, but if they're paying their people, all of them that much, man, this whole area is going to explode. But I have a hard time believing that's going to be.
A ton of weed growers everywhere. I don't know.
They'll all have grows in their basement, you know, that'd be their thing, but anyway.
So, yeah, so I.
Not around here, Tommy. We don't want to say that.
So it, it, you know, I understand what you're saying. And, and then that always, that always existed for, for the bit, the incentives we do with the business to try to get them here. And we'll continue to do that. I mean, we, we have them here. We're going to continue to work with them so they can continue to grow. Uh, I'm just saying, I don't know if, anytime in the near future, that we will ever have the possibility of an influx of such a, a large amount of workforce coming into the city. And I'm just saying, I'd like to see if we can try to capitalize on that.
And I'm just thinking of the citizens we currently have that currently live here that get their utility bills every month, you know, this. Think about it, Jason, think about it.
I recognize, I recognize the irony of this conversation at this point in time.
Let's, uh, let's just kind of move on.
Just move on. Talk about this one later, is that the plan?
Talk about this, that one later.
All right.
Uh, next one on our list is, uh, public comments. I do have an email here from Mr. Porter, uh, that, uh, he requested that, uh, we read it under public comments. Stated August sixth, twenty twenty, Mayor Rivera and council members. My preference would have been to submit my comments in person. But due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, I am, let me get my glasses here. I am not comfortable attending the meeting at this time. I have intentionally submitted my comments to this council early so that whomever responds is given ample opportunity to give thought and research and appropriate answer. My question is in reference to language that is included in ordinance number one six, uh, one zero six three dash zero five. one six, uh, one zero six three dash zero five zero six one nine, that was passed on May sixth, twenty nineteen. Please reference to section two point oh three, point oh three oh, comma, subsection B, which states, "The mayor shall be the president of the council and she, and shall preside at its meetings. The mayor, in the absence or inability of any of the councilmen to act, shall exercise temporary supervision over the department assigned to said councilman. I'm questioning the language that by my interpretation appears to give the mayor temporary supervision of a department not directly assigned to him slash her. I am aware of the language in subsection in parentheses A, in the same section, two point zero three point zero three oh, that grants the mayor authority and responsibility to report to the council any and all matters that may require attention in any department. I would also like to point out that six five ILCS five slash four dash five dash three states, "The commissioner of each department shall be the superintendent of that department." The last item that I would like reference is language in the Illinois Municipal Handbook, chapter one, that describes duties and responsibilities of council members under the various forms of municipal government in Illinois. When describing the commissioned form of government, comma, it states in parentheses, "Each commissioner shall have executive control over any administrative departments that are assigned to him slash her," end of parentheses. I have attended ma- multiple training sessions regarding the municipal government in Chicago, Peoria, and Springfield. I cannot recall any instance where the mayor, in a commissioned form of government, had the authority to exercise temporary supervision, uh, exercise temporary supervision is in parentheses, in any department not directly assigned to him or her, uh, in bold, without council action. I specifically recall being told that in the commissioned form of government, no one individual could act in any supervisory or authoritative role in any department not specifically assigned to him/her. Additionally, in a training that I have attended, specifically stated that a council member in a commissioned form of government is the only form of municipal government in Illinois that grants a council member authority to govern, to govern his slash her respective departments twenty-four seven. All other forms of municipal government only grants councilmen slash women administrative authority inside the parameters of the council meeting. By my interpretation, ordinance number one zero six three dash zero five zero six one nine appears to be in conflict with what I believe to be, to be true regarding mayor, mayorial problems in the commissioned form of municipal government. Can someone please show me the specific language in the Illinois statute that give the mayor, in the commissioned form of government, the authority to ex, in parentheses, exercise temporary supervision parentheses, over another councilperson's assigned department without council action? Sincerely, Tom Porter.
Uh, the mayor gave me Tom's letter for comment, uh, I disagree with Tom's analysis. Number one, uh, section four five one of the Illinois Municipal Code, uh, states, and I'm quoting, "The mayor shall be the president of the council and preside at all its meetings, and shall supervise all departments and report to the council for its action, all matters requiring attention in any department." Uh, I would further point out that the, the ordinance that, uh, Mr. Porter is referring to, uh, did not change any of the language in that section of the Municipal Code. The language that he objects to, uh, has been in the Oglesby Municipal Code, uh, certainly as far back as November twenty-seventh, two thousand, and probably before then. If you look at your code book, uh, and you look at section two, uh, point oh three, point oh three oh, uh, the ordinance we passed in two thousand nineteen, it hasn't been up, the code book hasn't been updated to reflect that. But if you look at your code book, at the bottom of that section, uh, it will list the last time that section has been amended. And that was amended by ordinance number four not, seven nine, uh, eleven twenty-seven zero zero, which means it was passed November twenty-seventh, two thousand. I had the clerk's office send me a copy of that ordinance, the two thousand ordinance, and although that ordinance made changes to section two oh three oh, uh, I'm sorry, two oh three, oh three oh, it, it didn't add the language that Tom is questioning. Uh, so I can only assume that the language Tom is questioning has been in your city code for more than twenty years, because it must have been in there, you know, since this was established. But more importantly, the ord, the, the language he's referring to, uh, has an important caveat in it. Uh, it, it, it says, uh, that, uh, let me just read that. It says, "The, the mayor shall be president of the council and shall preside at all its meetings." That is just about a verbatim quote from the state statute. And then it says, "The mayor, in the absence or inability of any of the cu- councilmen to act, shall exercise temporary supervision over the department assigned to said councilman." I don't think there's anything inconsistent with the Illinois Municipal Code there. Uh, if somebody has a heart attack, or a stroke, or, or is, 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 for whatever reason, temporarily not here, somebody's gonna have to, to, you know, direct the activities of that department. And that's all, that's all this ordinance, uh, this ordinance says, and I think clearly, section four five one of the Municipal Code, which confers supervisory of, uh, uh, authority over all departments, uh, and gives that to the mayor, w- would justify this ordinance, so I disagree that, that, number one, I disagree entirely that ordinance uh, eleven, uh, get the right, ordinance, uh, ten sixty-three oh five oh six one nine did anything, because that ordinance didn't add this language. This language has been in the code at least since two thousand, and my, my, based upon my limited research, it's probably been in there a lot longer than that. And I don't think it's in conflict with the Illinois Municipal Code, because it doesn't, it doesn't say the mayor gets to supervise all departments. It says, "In, in the event, uh, i- i- in, in the event of the inability, the absence or inability of any councilman to act." And, and I, I, I think it's perfectly lawful. I, I disagree with the analysis. And, and I am familiar with what the Municipal Handbook says that Tom's referring to, I actually made a copy of it. But that Municipal Handbook was simply referring to a commissioner's authority over their department. The section he's referring to didn't talk about the inner relationship between, uh, the, the mayor and, uh, the, you know, and the individual commissioners. So, that's, that's my response.
Maybe do we have any other?
Greg?
Oh, okay, Greg, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Greg Stein, Oglesby resident. The only non-staff, uh, person in this room here, so-
Congratulations, Greg.
I'll try to make this real short.
He's an outside contractor.
Yeah. Yeah, Jim's here, he, he sorta works for the city as an engineer.
Wow.
He does work for the city as engineer, city engineer, okay. Uh, working meetings, I kinda wish you'd had a more of an open floor, so I could've asked maybe a question or two here and there, instead of sitting there quiet. And, uh, I, that whole discussion about the ambulances, don't we have an ambulance and a fire board of directors?
No.
We, we, we went away from that?
Um, yes.
Okay. And, um-
Actually, the, the ambulance board was dissolved.
Oh, that's been a few years ago.
Four, five years ago, yeah.
Okay, I, cuz I was on the ambulance service, and I knew we had a board of directors back then, when this whole issue of scheduling and having enough volunteers to cover the schedule, and it was, uh, okay. I wasn't sure that we dissolved that, um, and we did. Uh, the, the whole thing about voice over this, the tornado siren thing, it, it does rotate, so it'd have to be real quick blurps.
I didn't know that either.
In each direction.
I didn't know it rotated.
It'd be close around in circles, so it'd have to be real quick and repeated, four directions at least, so. I agree with Tom, code red, which I didn't get a code red for this storm. Uh, if Peru issued one, it's, it didn't come through to me, and I'm registered, so I don't know what's the, the thing there is.
So that is a question that we've brought up, and I, I don't know who's kinda researching that. Um, so for example, depends on where you, it's like, my city phone, the code red came through. Where I reside, for some reason, it has to do with where the lines are drawn and stuff like that, cuz I've registered for it on my, but my address for that one, it doesn't go off. So I don't know if there's something we probably have to talk to about that, cuz that is a concern, that if some people are registered for code red, and it won't activate for them, um, we'll probably have to talk to whoever manages that.
I, I suppose you, if, since it's there, you could say, tornado warning, tornado warning, tornado warning, and that might work.
I only made the comment, just cuz I-
I think the sirens work just fine, you hear that, you go down to the basement, right?
I only, I only mentioned it because I was told they had the capability.
No, if you're in the Illinois Valley, you go outside and look, and then my wife hollers at me to go down to the basement.
Um, the next thing I wrote down is the street parking, two hours you guys decided on, or three hours?
No, no, the, the ordinance already-
Two hours.
The ordinance already states that it's two hours. We put on the agenda to talk about that.
Thinking about upping it to three hours, I kinda like that. Um, a football game, if somebody's in a bar watching a football game, that's gonna be at least three hours, and kinda don't wanna have, have people running out during halftime, shuffling their cars around, kinda like, I know how Ottawa used to be, chalking, chalking the car tires, and, and had a meter made going around, um, giving out tickets.
I think it's more complaint-driven here, I don't think we're, we're not hiring anyone to go chalk cars.
I totally understand the situation that we, down in that two hundred east Walnut Street, we got people parking there constantly, um, twen- twenty-four seven in that block, um, and because they're, because that's where they like to park.
So, I should clarify, cuz you, you mentioned like, football, for example. It does say, it's two consecutive hours, except on Sundays and holidays, and from the hours of nine AM to six PM. I think the idea of, again, I'm just guessing, I'm assuming this idea was to prevent from people blocking all day when they're supposed to be, uh, like, for shops and things like that. It doesn't play a factor at, at nighttime.
I, I sorta like the concept, it's, it, it needs-
What we're, what we're, Greg, you know what, what we're trying to do is, is make space available so the business can operate.
Yeah, I, I, I know.
So you're saying you like it currently at the, the way it says, cuz the good news is, we don't have to do anything, cuz it's already in there.
The, the one thing, though, is, we got a lot of apartment buildings in this town, um, and they need those places to park, uh, unless, um, we start tearing down some buildings to create, uh, parking lots for those apartment buildings. Or, um, but I get the concept, I, I liked, I, when I saw it on here, it, I know it's a problem in, in some blocks where constant twenty-four seven parking on the street. And it doesn't seem like, uh, the, the, all the signs that used to say you had to be off the street for the street sweeper, they disappeared. And I think the only thing that you, uh, enforce anymore is the two-inch snowfall, but it's not on, it's not a street sign anymore. They used to be there, but they got taken down.
I have a feeling someone's stealing street signs, then, if they're all getting taken down, Greg.
No, they all, they all, all this, all those signs about the, the street sweeper and the two-inch snow, they got taken down.
So, that-
By the street department.
I can answer that question for you, cuz I did bring that up over a year ago. Uh, the street department did take those signs down, and I said, is that a problem with the street sweeping? Cuz he does the street sweeping at three, four in the morning, and it has not been a problem. So he took the street signs down to, to, to unclutter some of the, the signs that needed to be there, because it wasn't necessar- necessary. If it becomes a problem, though, then obviously I'd put the signs back, but as of right now, it has not been a problem, and the, um, cuz usually the Walnut and Columbia will get swept every week usually, and then it takes about a month to get around to the rest of the, the city locations.
That, that, uh, the two streets, east and west, that was Spring Street, I heard, and what was this direction?
School Avenue and Spring Avenue, is what the specific thing talks about, it doesn't, this is, I didn't say anything about any of the other streets in the city when it comes to limited parking. There is some stuff that talks about it, but I haven't gone through that.
Okay, and then, um, it's clutter, um, and this stopping people from parking on First, Second, and Third Street, and other streets around here, the, the narrow streets. I would like to use, to mostly use yellow paint on the curbs, rather than posting a bunch of signs in people's yards that they have to mow around.
Well, we already have that, and there are locations that already have the signs that are there. So I don't know if we'd wanna go with a different, I mean, I guess we can talk about that, if, I'll ask that in the, in the letters I send out.
I don't look at the ground when I'm parking, I don't know about you guys, if there's a sign that tells me I can't park there, that, that helps a lot.
Well, so, so it is true-
You're actually talking about the residents mostly, um, so they will know their, the curb in, their curb parking, and I, I don't think they would appreciate having a sign that says, "This driveway, you can't park here because there's a driveway over there."
Well, so, so from what, again, we don't have this ordinance, but so that, the description that was to me, it's not that there's a sign there. The, like, right now, the ordinance, we don't have a sign that says you can't park in front of somebody's driveway. But that's in the ordinance, you can't park in front of somebody to block a driveway. What we're talking about was the ordinance would say, you would not be allowed to park on the other side of the street behind their driveway, not necessarily a sign.
I, I knew that, yeah, I, okay.
And, and just to refer with the yellow paint, so we do have yellow paint on our corners throughout the city, and there is quite a bit of maintenance to do with that. If we were to do entire streets of no sign with yellow paint, there's significant higher, and like Tommy said, I don't know if that is, is noticed as well as a sign. But, good input.
I'll try to put them on, I, existing signposts, rather than more clutter. Um, as far as Facebook and, um, uh, not allowing comments or, or allowing them, I think you'll di- diminish Facebook's, uh, usefulness by not allowing comments. I don't know why you think you're, you have to be a watchdog over it, just because it's a city site. Um, I, I understand that you're worried about, um, being sued, but I don't think we should ha- as communities have to be worried about being sued as a community because of what somebody says on Facebook. And as far as Facebook being forever, and since nobody seems to read comments, I've been commenting about how, how when you guys go downstairs for your, uh, closed sessions, the camera runs back here, and it irritates me to no end that you are eating up forty-five to fifty-five minutes of dead air, that paddle fan spinning up there. Putting stuff on Facebook that's gonna be there forever costs somebody money, and somebody is all of us. So I don't think that you even need to think that- So I don't think that you even need to think that because this session is being posted to Facebook. That it has to remain there forever. I think there should be a policy where they are flushed out at the, after three hundred sixty-five days. And I don't think you should have to worry about people making comments. And I don't, does this city pay Facebook to put all these hours of these, uh, COVID meetings online? I, nobody is. So, um.
I, I, I think Greg, we, we have to keep that camera running.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's, it's an, it's, the meeting is ongoing and I think if we're gonna be streaming it, it's, it's part of the meeting. I understand it's dead air, but it's still part of the meeting.
I, I just.
And the other thing is I think, I think as far as deleting it, uh, from Facebook, I think once we, once we post it, we've created a record. And we have to follow the rules of the, of the, uh, Illinois records, uh.
Facebook does have a policy where you can, uh, expunge your Facebook page and save it offline into your own hard drive. There is a, there is a way to do that and then you could pull it off. That, that's really what Mark Zuckerberg should be worrying about is all of this stuff piling into the servers of America and the world.
First of all, they're Facebook servers, so I really am not worried about them having more space, cause they've got, what, sixty of them in America right now?
Burning electricity.
Second, the state of Illinois is why we have to follow those rules. So unless you can get the governor to change them anytime soon, that's what we have to follow.
Now, social media is an ever-changing thing, you know, I, the reason we kinda went with the new camera we did today, which I hope it's working well for people. Is we had a positive response to that, that it's beneficial. Um, Facebook could change a policy all of a sudden to where they limit stream times or, or they limit how much you would do. Or maybe they charge and then we would, we would take a different policy from there. So it's, it's very flexible yet.
Alright, I, as, as far as, now I, as far as whether or not, uh, your shadow banning and restricting people's comments. It was happening. Uh, I have that comment saved. Um, if comments were being allowed, but nobody else was seeing it except for the admin, which I didn't really like. Uh, that's called shadow banning. Um.
I didn't think that was, I didn't think that was going on.
As far as the incentive for, to bring residents into town. Um, I think, and I've suggested this before, you should consider a tiny house settlement. It'd be similar to the, uh, the trailer park, but smaller. Where you pu- put in the infrastructure that almost like a fender mender's house. Gets drug in and slid off of, uh, a, and then it, the water and the electric is hooked up. You, right there, you're probably talking maybe an entry into a small house of maybe twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Instead of a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, as you as a government body, you're gonna be worried that your tax base is gonna be shrinking. Because it's a smaller house of square footage and you can't run the property taxes up.
No, I'm gonna be worried they're gonna abandon them, Greg. That would be my number one worry is they'll abandon them in their little world down there. And then we'll have four of them, we'll have to figure out why we have these four little lots of the city seized and we can't do anything with it. That's what I'd be worried about.
The canoe landing was, uh, closed yesterday. Is, is that because of tree damage across the road? How when, how long is that gonna take to get open again?
The parks are the least of our concern compared to the residents and the streets have always been.
We're, we're trying to, we're trying to get everybody back on and, uh, and our, our entire force is doing a hell of a job.
I'll go into a little bit more detail about that in the, in one of the reports, but it, it's one of the farthest things. I got people sending me pictures of trees that, oh, I got a tree limb that's broken and I'm like, the, we have things still hanging on, on power lines. We, we, I mean, we are scrambling to do everything we possibly can to get people restored. I'll go into a little bit of detail of that later, but some of these park things are, are pretty far from, I mean, every employee is all hands on deck.
With a chainsaw, if I went down there and chopped the trees off, would I be stepping on an employee's toes by, uh, taking work away from them?
You're, it's a liability for the city and you'd probably be trespass from the parks, if not banned.
And, um. Okay, so I've asked when TIF one exactly ends, what date? It's next year, correct? And what, what day of next year? May first?
I don't know. I believe it's December, I believe it's December thirty-first, uh, but it would be reflected in the. It'll, yeah, but it'll be, the, the tax bills for December, uh, thirty-first, the tax bills for twenty twenty-one. Uh, will not come out until twenty twenty-two, so it'll still be TIF increment generated in twenty twenty-two. Because the tax bill you paid this year is for last year's real estate taxes.
I'm not worried about the money coming out of my, uh, tax bill or whatever, however it is. But I'm, I'm wondering when we have to use the TIF money in TIF District One.
Because they're contiguous, we're gonna roll them over into the, I, I, I defer to her client on this, but I believe we're gonna roll them over into the contiguous TIF.
But I understand you're not able to spend the money in TIF One any longer.
I think that's correct.
That is correct.
So, what are we gonna, are we gonna do anything with Seneca Square and the Resner Building? And then this new idea of the dog park, which I don't, I kinda like and, um, I guess there's soybeans planted on it right now. Um, but, uh, the, that space between the new water tower and the new cell tower, is that in TIF One?
Yes.
That's TIF One?
Might even be in TIF Six now. I think it's in TIF Six now.
That's in TIF Six? Well, what about Seneca Building and the Resner Building? Or is Seneca Square and the Resner Building getting something going before you have to give away TIF One's money to one, two to six?
We, we do have some things going on the, uh, Resner Schmidt Building. And, uh, uh, we're gonna go through that. Uh, we've got some interested parties to do it. Uh, long and the short of it is, uh, we had put an ad in the paper, or notice in the paper.
I saw it.
We're looking to do that again. Who's ever interest- interested would go before the design and review board on what they intend to do. And the council would make a decision on who to, who to transfer the title. And then there's, uh, uh, how do we do that with the, with the deeds? They'd be, uh, handled and, and.
We, we'll probably do, there's, there's at least one individual that's now come to the city and indicated that they would like to, uh. I don't know if they're gonna tear it down and build something new or re, or, or fix what's there. And, uh, what we'll have to do is, uh, number one, they'll have to submit something to the city in writing. Uh, if, if they're talking about putting up something new, that we'll probably need to make sure that their proposal is reviewed by the design review board. Uh, and then the issue will come to the council for the council to decide whether they wanna, you know, give the property to them. Uh, subject to them completing, you know, the, whatever proposed redevelopment, uh, that, that, that they are making to the city.
Okay, well, I'd just like to, I would like to see it stand, stay standing up, I hope. Uh, rather than a hole, except if it got torn down, it could be that parking lot for the other side of the street. That I see, uh, an issue with people needing to park on the street. Um, cause that's where they, they do. Um, the last thing was, uh, the, the electric rates and, and I got my, my July tax, or, um, utility bill here. And, um, I, the, I like the idea of putting the, uh, what's it called? The, uh.
In the comments section?
Yeah, the, the comments section, the, the, uh. Power cost adjustment each month, I, I think you suggested it.
You're the one, you're actually the one that gave me the idea. I didn't even realize that's on the bills, cause I don't even look at them hardly.
The, um, put the, put that in there so we could at least see what the, uh, the, the state, uh, buying our power from the, the state. Uh, what you cannot control. And, um, the, the rest of the bill is sort of under your, under, under your watchful eyes. The, uh, and the, the other thing about taxes, the you, city utility taxes, that on this, the, the. The sewer flat fee and the tax and the city utility tax. I, the, and then there's a water utility tax, the tax and the city utility tax. What, um, utility is generating those two taxes?
So, I don't know if I can answer that question for you right now. I'll, I'll tell you this though, Greg, some of the questions you're, you're asking can be kinda specific. If you would like to come to City Hall sometime and we can, we can go over it and look at it. As I said before in the past, our billing software has quite a bit of limitations. So some of these things are combined on there. So it does, the price is still gonna be the same, right? But there are some things that are like, for example, the electric, that has your usage, the power cost adjustment, the, uh, uh, the flat rate fee. Some of the tax things I think are combined. I think the water and sewer has one that's combined. So again, we have limitations on how it gets split out, but if you'd like to, I can go over it with you and we can, we can look at it together. I don't know the tax one offhand, what it is, but we can find out, cause I think some of your questions are very specific, uh, and I'd be happy to go with, through it with you.
Well, if, if you just labeled the, the bill, what, in, unless it's a combination.
Are you saying label like your specific bill or label all the bills? Because that's what we can't do.
Not, not label the bill to me on my personal, uh, amount specifically. But it says sewer, flat fee, landfill, tax, city utility tax, water utility tax. The, the one under, the tax under landfill and the city utility tax, is that an electric tax? Is that a parks department?
Alright Greg, how about you call tomorrow and they'll go over your whole bill at City Hall, please?
So, this, this is what, this is what I think you're not understanding. We, we can.
Greg, if you would, if you would come in, we'll make sure that we get the answers for you. We'll make sure that if anybody else wants the answers, uh, has a question about it, we'll give you, we'll give them the answers.
Alright, there's a number of us, uh, did our figures of on Facebook. But, uh, and, and calculated what, we couldn't calculate taxes because we can't tell on electricity.
If you called City Hall, they would've told you all those numbers, Greg. So tomorrow, I think you should call with all your friends on Facebook and you'll get the explanation.
As I said, the next month, I will put the formula for at least the electric and the power cost adjustment. Because as I said before, right now, it's correct. You, nobody can look at their bill just by looking at it and figure out the math on it, because we don't have enough data in there. I will put the power cost adjustment with the formula, so you can at least calculate that. So residents will be able to calculate that.
I, I saw your Facebook post, where, where it's the eleven dollar meter, the meter hanging on the wall. My, uh, my bill was seven, seventeen point five seven cents per electric unit.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tom, do you?
I have nothing to report tonight. We had a full, full.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Kern, I know you.
Short sweet to the point, Jason.
Yeah, I'll start with the easy one first. Water, um, big thing going on there is, um, I, I know more people are at home right now and stuff. But our wastewater treatment plant, obviously you know it's taxed as it is, there are many, many rags and wipes. And even some little shampoo bottles that are being collected at the wastewater treatment plant and causing some problems. So please, try not to throw those down there. Um, streets, okay, now we start getting into the other stuff. So, uh, we, we've gone out for help for a lot of stuff going on. As far as the streets and the cleanup, there is an incredible amount of material. Um, up until two days ago, I've never heard of a term called derate show. We've got, we've been hit incredibly hard. Um, there is a lot of requests out there. Um, through a, a means that we have to get, to get help for chipping services. I don't know if that means that we went is going, is going to come anytime soon, because there is like a request for thirty-five separate chipping crews for the area. Um, so, the good news is, uh, I did get a point of contact from the county today. And they are gonna be able to provide some help starting next week. How much help that is and the scope of that help, I do not know. The reason I, I mentioned this is if we had absolutely no help ourselves and the streets department with our little chipper. And moving material to the, the, the dump that's too big to ship, it would probably take us well past Labor Day to get the amount of material that's there. So I ask residents, um, I, first of all, I thank all the residents that are out helping each other and neighbors and cutting things up. You, we're gonna do absolute best we can. Um, I hate to say this, keep in mind, if, if trees that fell down on your property. It's technically not the city's responsibility. Now, I say that, that doesn't mean, I mean, obviously we're gonna do chipping services. I'm not gonna tell my guys to look for what didn't fall, what did not. We're gonna chip and, and take care of your stuff. But I do ask you kindly, if, if you have some trees that fall in your yard, just keep in mind, we are limited on our capabilities to be able to get that done. So I ask for your help and I see that people are doing it. I see people out with chainsaws and helping out neighbors and I thank everybody that's doing that. Okay, electric department. Alright, I've given some updates. Uh, for those that don't look at Facebook, I will tell you, it has been a very trying period. And our, our crew of people that we have in the city have done, in my opinion, have done nothing but an absolute fantastic job. I, I don't think people quite understand the, the extent of the damage. Um, there is well over a week's worth of electrical, I gotta take this thing off, I'm sorry. There is well over a week's worth of electrical damage throughout the city. So the fact that within four hours, we got twenty percent, eight hours, fifty percent, about twelve hours, ninety percent of the city up and running. The, the reason it went like that is because our, our superintendent is a very smart individual and he is fantastic at what he does. He's been able to isolate, uh, some of our infrastructure that we have. So when people think, wow, it's coming up so fast, there is massive problems throughout our infrastructure. We've been able to isolate strings of power and lines and, and be able to reroute things. That's how we got people up the fastest ways we could. We are still working on that. So we started with the largest groups, uh, to get all the circuits. Now we're working on streets, uh, and, and, and small groupings. The goal is to get all the groups of people down, uh, and, and be just at individuals now. Um, so I don't have an accurate count right now, but, cause we've been in here so long. But as of three hours ago, the only, every circuit was up and the only street or group that was down is there's a, there's a bank of, uh, stuff between second and first street. There's about eight uses on that. The goal was to get that completed and them up. And then the only people that's left in the entire city are those that have individual connections. Now I know, you know, I, I say that we've done a fantastic job and I think for most people, they recognize that. I understand, cause at this point, will we be close to ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of the town that has power? If you're in that three to four percent, you're probably thinking, it's not so great and I understand that. I'm, I'm just trying to let you know, the amount of ability and manpower we have is, is relatively small. We have a three man crew. Uh, I spent most of Monday trying to look out for help with, with the, we have a, what's called a, um, I forget the term.
Mutual aid.
Mut- we have a mutual aid agreement with IMEA. So, the, the problem is a lot, so usually we have, uh, our nearby municipalities. Our, our people in the city know other municipality superintendents by name. They can talk, they communicate, they share resources. The problem is, we've never come across a storm like this that was so wide, that it, it caused the same amount of damage to the nearby municipalities. So I had to start going, it was three hours south of us before I found people that were not injured to the point to where they could provide that. So, uh, we actually have two crews. They arrived yesterday afternoon, two separate crews from two IMEA municipalities and I cannot thank them enough. If they would have not have arrived, that east side of town would definitely not have been up before nightfall last night. So, the two towns of, where they is, uh, they provided two bodies from the, the city of Altamont and the city of Sullivan. I cannot thank them enough. You know, I, I don't know if we'll have a storm like this again, that we can be able to repay our favor to, um, to share resources and, and things like that. I hope another major catastrophe don't like this happen, so we are in, the city is indebted to those individuals and we have them for tomorrow as well. So, because they've been working on so many different things, we will have more crews to work on the individual homes. Now with that, I wanna talk about a. Now with that, I want to talk about a couple of things. I made a post about, uh, these weatherheads. You know, I didn't know what a weatherhead was either. A weatherhead is that, this is the piece of gear that if, if something came down and it ripped it away from your house, that has to be reattached. The city is not allowed to be the ones to reattach that because it's your personal property. So I put something out there, you technically have to get an inspection for that before we can rehook that up. I'm letting people know so they can get that going now. People I know, some people are upset about, why'd I get an inspection? You know, why did I fail an inspection? Because some people just threw it up against their wall. The problem is our, our electrical inspector is only failing people if he sees a problem, whether it's shock or fire. So keep in mind, we want to get people up, but we want to make sure we're doing it safely. Second thing I want to talk about, um, I'm aware that there are some people that have some whole home generators in the city. So here's the interesting thing about that. We have a policy, we have a policy, we have an ordinance that talks about solar installations. If you have a solar installation for your home, there's rules and regulations and you have to get it approved by the city. The big thing about that is so we know about it. There right now is no legal requirement, um, for you to get an approval to get a whole home generator. So the problem with that is people might have whole home generators out there that our city employees are not aware of. That is a problem. We'll have to look to fix that in the future. The concern I have for that now is if somebody comes to hook up your service and your whole home generator is operating and we are unaware of it, there is a potential danger there of a backfeed. So i- if you are on the list of people that still need to get your hookup and you have a whole, and you're operating on a whole home generator, we would really appreciate that. You don't have a legal reason to tell us, but we would really appreciate that. Um, that's about all I got. Uh, right now we're standing at approximately, well, as of three hours ago, about eighty individuals that still don't have electric. Um, I'm, I don't have a timeframe for that, but we are going through them as fast as we can. When I mentioned that there's so much damage to the city, because some people talked about voltage drops and problems like that, I don't want to get into the technical stuff because one, I'm not the expert on it. But the way we've had power rerouted, it is not the ideal way we want to run the city. We are working so quickly and rapidly and safely to make sure that there's ways that people are getting power to them. After everybody gets power, there is still an immense amount of work of lines and things that we got to put back up to maintain our infrastructure and have the redundancy that it does. Um, I appreciate the people that have called in. You know, I, I understand the concerns and I, I wish there was a way that I can make these things happen faster for us. But as we get into the areas that have more and more damage, it is becoming more difficult. So they go to make a hookup and then they find out that, oh, it's not just that it was ripped away from the wall, the, the supporting pole and the, uh, the transformer is gone as well. So then it, it causes more work. So the, the work is slow, but I have three crews of people working on this stuff and we are going to shoot through it as fast as we can. I cannot thank the, the city workers enough for their diligence, uh, vigilance and, and how hard they've been working. Uh, they've been working into the wee hours of the morning. Uh, my focus also is just their safety to continue through. So please be patient with us. We will get through this together. And again, I want to thank all of the people that are being great neighbors and helping each other out wherever they can. That's all I got. Thanks.
Nothing to report tonight.
Uh, I, I'm going to be real short. Uh, it was gratifying to see how, how our citizens came together and, and helped one another. Uh, you know, we, we're going through some tough times. Uh, but the great thing, the good thing is nobody's gotten hurt. Uh, and it's been good, you know, it's, uh, these guys are really putting in a lot of hours. We've got people, the, uh, that have come and helped, uh, Salvation Army was, uh, uh, provided lunch. Uh, people, uh, you know, providing water. Uh, Old Westbury comes together when, when they need to. And what that, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Parker, right.
Aye.
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 Aye.